Being held remotely. I've been chairman now for over two years. And none of us would have believed the totemic changes to the world that have taken place during this time. Members, may I remind you that this meeting is being webcast live and is open to the public, although I reserve the right to suspend filming if the need arises. Now a few meeting etiquette reminders. Please only turn your camera on and microphone on when you wish to speak. If your broadband connection is poor and is affecting the quality of your call, would you please consider turning off your camera and using only the microphone to speak? Please use the raise the hand function if you wish to speak. Once you have spoken, please remember to lower the hand afterwards. Alternatively, if you do not have that button and you wish to speak, would you please make sure that you indicate? And a member of Democratic Services will give you a thumbs up in the chat function to acknowledge your request. The meeting will be webcast and recorded by Democratic Services and will be minuteed by the committee manager. In the event of disruption to the live broadcast due to any technical issues, I will suspend the meeting until the issue can be resolved. Voting as always will be by general assent and a roll call will be issued where there is dissent and in the event of a recorded vote. So I move on to the first agenda item. Item one, apologies for absence. Apologies have been received from Mr Kemp, Mr Elwood, Mrs Angel, Mrs Lay and Mrs Witham. And I just take the opportunity, as I'm sure that Colin Kemp is watching us now. Colin, my dear friend, I want you to know that you are in all of our prayers for a swift and full recovery. Wish you well. Item two minutes, pages eleven to forty of the agenda. May I cite the minutes of the council held on 7th of July 2020 as a correct record of the meeting?
Agreed.
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 Item three, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of disclosable pecuniary interests, significant personal interests or prejudicial interests that members wish to make at this point? Thank you.
Mr Chairman, I was showing my hand.
Rachel, do go ahead.
I'd like to declare that my son Adam Lake does work for Surrey County Council in case this should affect any of the items on the agenda. Though it is not a prejudicial interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Legg. Item four, my announcements. And as always, my announcements can be found in the full agenda. But furthermore, may I please draw your attention to the Queen's Birthday Honours List 2020 that is included in the supplementary agenda on page five. The list this year was postponed from June due to the current pandemic and it celebrates this selfless service and good deeds, both of ordinary people and more recognisable names during this difficult time. But I'd like to make special mention and take great pleasure in confirming that one of our own members, Mrs Julie Isles, has been made an OBE. Many congratulations, Julie. Item five, the leader's statement. I call Tim Oliver, leader of the council, to make his statement. And may I remind members that you can make comments as well as question the leader afterwards after he's spoken. Leader, over to you.
Thank you very much. Mr Chairman, we come together again as full council, still meeting virtually and still living and working with COVID-19 having a major impact on our lives. But in these challenging times, I am proud of the work the Surrey County Council and its partners have done in leading the county through this crisis. Our focus is and must be to protect our health services, keep our residents safe, look after our most vulnerable and continue in our mission to make Surrey a better place to live and do business for everyone. Although this is a difficult time, not just for Surrey County Council, but for everyone, every business, every organisation, so we cannot simply stand still and see what happens. Our adaptation to the new normal continues. We must be agile and adapt to the changing landscape. We must also look to future opportunities for this county and make sure we are best placed to take those opportunities. Mr Chairman, that is what this council is all about. Making sure we provide the best conditions for our residents and businesses to thrive. Our work on how we as local government can change to better serve our residents has been well documented over the last couple of months. And I will talk about how we plan to take that forward in a moment. I will also outline the work we're doing through the Economic Commission and the One Surrey Growth Board to ensure we can effectively guide the county through the recovery from COVID-19 and chart a path to a prosperous future for our local economy and our business communities. But first, Mr Chairman, I want to give a brief but important update on the current public health situation in Surrey. Since we last convened as full council, the test and trace programme has become a regular part of our lives. And Surrey County Council has taken a local lead in collating and analysing the data coming back from our communities. We have been quick to act when and where there have been sharp increases in cases, communicating openly with residents, alerting them to heightened risk and urging extra vigilance. Overall, that local action and targeted messaging has proved successful. But there is no avoiding the national trend that we're seeing, as well as some spikes of COVID positive cases in our local communities. COVID is spreading amongst the population, further restrictions have been and are being introduced and we must be prepared for a challenging winter. I must again stress how important it is that everyone continues to play their part to keep Surrey safe. We all must follow the government guidelines to ensure we protect ourselves and others. I have every faith in Ruth Hutchinson, our Director of Public Health and her team, who will continue to act to manage the situation locally. I also have faith in Surrey's Local Resilience Forum that stepped up in March and remains in place. It is ably led by Joanna Killian, our County Council Chief Executive, alongside Steve Owen Hughes, the Chief R Officer, and Gavin Stephens, the Chief Constable of Surrey Police. Everything winter can throw at us is being prepared for, including extreme weather, flu, EU exit transition, as well as COVID second wave. We have proven throughout this year to date that we will do everything in our power to guide Surrey and our residents through unprecedented challenges. We are standing ready to do so again. Despite all these external challenges, we must also continue to deliver our vital services for residents, support our local economy and partners and deliver on our strategic role for the county. Mr Chairman, as we have previously discussed, the government's plan to publish a white paper this autumn on local government devolution and recovery was, without doubt, an opportunity for Surrey that we simply had to engage with. Ministers were very clear about the government's ambition for local government, including the devolution of greater powers alongside wide-scale reorganisation to address longstanding issues of burdensome bureaucracy, duplication, waste and needless complication. As other responsible local authorities did, we engaged fully with this agenda, seeing it as an opportunity to be better, to deliver a better local council for residents, drive better outcomes for our county and unleash a better future for Surrey. While the White Paper and associated reform has yet to be published, undoubtedly through a combination of competing government priorities and the uncertain times we find ourselves in, the work we have undertaken is already proving immensely valuable in improving our services and relationship with residents. What is important to me beyond any structural change or governance is our residents and giving them more influence over what really matters to them in their local area. The bedrock of our vision is the creation of local community networks. We want to deliver power to the people. These networks will give local people a greater say in the issues that affect them, using local knowledge to influence councillors and officers. We will continue to develop these exciting plans in anticipation of the detail of the devolution agenda of government. And indeed, Mr Chairman, we have already moved to this model of doing things as a county council. We must be proactive and not reactive. We are working alongside local partners and empowering communities in Surrey through our Communities Project Fund, Libraries Transformation, Youth Centre Transformation, Greener Design Challenge and the infrastructure projects like the Farnham Master Plan. But we want to go further. We propose to create up to thirty new local community networks across Surrey based on natural, distinct communities local people identify with and call home. Residents will come together with local members, town and parish councils where they exist, other public services and partners to decide priorities, make decisions and tackle local issues. The networks will cover populations between thirty and fifty thousand residents, much smaller than the current district and borough councils and bringing decision maker much closer to local communities. We will help deliver a strong digital engagement offer, making it simple for local people to communicate and participate online and use the latest evidence and insight to better understand local opportunities and challenges, ensuring much more effective partnership working on solving local issues. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Helen Crack, who's been leading the cross-party, cross-council working group on this. And I call on all members, both county and district and borough level, to work with us to deliver better local government for our residents. Streamlining local government also presents an opportunity to deliver financial savings that will help us meet the forthcoming financial challenges whilst protecting services. The recent letter from the Minister for Local Government confirms that we should continue with the work to find more efficient and effective ways of delivering local government services. Many districts and boroughs are under greater strain, in part due to lost income, which is unlikely to be replaced. So I'm very pleased to see that the recent conversations about the structure of local government have brought them together to look at ways that they can share services and reduce costs. As a county council, we are in better financial shape than we would have been a few years ago. We have our finances in order and set a stable, balanced and progressive budget in February. Indeed, it was this financial stability that has provided the bedrock to Surrey's response to COVID-19. Whilst we are not in any way in a critical state as an organisation, there are of course obvious pressures compounded by the impact of COVID-19. Make no mistake, tough decisions are going to have to be made and the savings that could have come through reorganisation are looking less and less likely. Mr Chairman, our revised organisation strategy sets out four key areas that will drive the work of this council during the next phase of work to deliver improved services to our residents. These ambitions are underpinned our outlined business case for local government and reform in Surrey and were identified as key areas through residents and focus groups. They are growing a sustainable economy so everyone can benefit, tackling health inequalities, enabling a greener future and empowering resilient and connected communities. There is no doubt that the right combination of devolved powers and structural reform would put Surrey in an extremely strong position to deliver these priorities. In fact, I'm confident with the foundations we already have in place over the last couple of years that Surrey could be a national leader in all of these areas. We will build on Surrey Hartland's integrated care system, drawing on local community networks that are more closely aligned with primary care networks. We will continue the work to integrate health and social care with a more preventative approach. We will use local knowledge alongside data insight to fully understand the health needs of local populations. We will deliver the climate change strategy we set out in the summer and target investment and resource in the areas that most need it. We will press ahead with tackling congestion and improving air quality by working with residents, local community networks and our business community. We will ensure our strategic planning reflects our environmental ambitions. We will continue to address future skills needs by joining up the work of the Skills Board with Strategic Economic Planning. We will bring forward a shared Surrey Place ambition, helping foster that sense of place and bringing forward infrastructure investments. We will work to strengthen the local economy, supported by the One Surrey Growth Board. Mr Chairman, it is that final point that I wish to expand on in a little more detail. Our establishment of the Future Economy Surrey Commission almost a year ago signalled our intention to make sure Surrey is a place fit for the future, ready to overcome the challenges we face and take the opportunities that are coming our way. A lot has changed in a year, but the core ambition remains. Through the work with the University of Surrey, the commission has now produced a substantial report with recommendations to the One Surrey Growth Board that aims to shape the county's future through COVID recovery, a challenging global economic outlook and the changing shape of our economy and the ways of working. The report is an excellent basis for us to work with partners and businesses to deliver that brighter future for Surrey. We have so many world-beating opportunities in Surrey to grow further, building on the Surrey Research Park, 5G Innovation Centre, artificial intelligence, cybersecurity, space and satellite technology, high-tech health, excellent veterinary and life sciences, pharma and the automotive sector. If we can deliver the right conditions for our industries to grow, better connectivity, infrastructure, a better place to live and work, the possibility for our county are endless. Mr Chairman, we have also been looking at the Surrey identity. How can we help people better connect with the fantastic assets that we have here? How can we galvanise stakeholders to be champions for this county? And how can we make Surrey a destination place for both businesses and visitors? We need to have clear plans for inward investment and tourist propositions, create greater opportunities to compete for investment, talent and resources, better collaboration with businesses and other organisations already based here or aspiring to be based here. We need advocates and ambassadors to let people know just how fantastic this county is and we need to strengthen our lobbying of government for our share of funding, including a growth deal. We must speak with one voice, a single voice from local government, health, community safety organisations, businesses, universities and further education colleges. Indeed, all of those people and organisations that can help make this the best place to live, to work, to visit. Surrey has much to commend it. We have idyllic villages, interesting market towns, universities, theme parks, easy access to London and to international airports, the Surrey Hills, the North Downs and a long history of innovation. But it doesn't shout about itself and at times perhaps is too inward-looking and undoubtedly over the years there has been a sense of complacency. We have a transient and ageing population, hidden areas of deprivation, a very high cost of housing which makes it very difficult to attract key workers and a perception that our county is simply the playground for London. But our natural assets, our strong relationships and beautiful countryside, the lifestyle our county can offer, Surrey's innovation and now the desire to be amongst the best provide the bedrock for future vibrancy and success. Mr Chairman, we can sit here as elected members and take the easy option and do nothing. We can wait to be told by governments what they think is best for this county. We can put our head in the sand and pretend that nothing has changed over the last fifty years and that the way local government operates cannot be improved. Or we can come out fighting. We can fight for our residents, we can fight for a better quality of life for everybody, we can fight for equal opportunity and we can fight to ensure that no one is left behind. That is why I first sought election to local government over twenty years ago and I'm certain that is why many of you did so as well. I believe that our residents know what is best for them in the places that they live and I believe it is our duty to listen to them and wherever possible to deliver those ambitions. Our residents want to live in a safe environment, they want access to good facilities, they want to be able to travel around this county and they want us to be serious about delivering a greener environment. They want to lead a healthy life and they want to make sure that we stand up for the more vulnerable members of our society. Surrey County Council and our partners across wider local government and the public sector are a key part of the Surrey ecosystem and that is why Surrey together can and will deliver those aspirations. We must not be complacent or timid in our ambitions. We must be bold, ready to embrace change and relentless in our mission to deliver better. Mr Chairman, we will move forward, we will not stand still. We will be an organisation that can lead the way and even with all the challenges we're facing, I'm confident we will succeed for the people of Surrey. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. I now call Mr Darby to speak first. Nick, you've got three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Leader. Working together for the benefit of residents, those who live and work in Surrey, that is what it has to be all about for all of us. We are in the middle of a COVID surge, being there for our communities, very much including their mental health. But it's not just COVID, we must lose sight of everything else. We expect members' briefings, detailed information to enable scrutiny, to allow us to be critical friends. The unitarisation debate will no doubt remain with us, some would say it is yet to start properly. Mental health is an issue, even more so now due to COVID. In the same way we consider an equality impact assessment, I would ask the Leader to ensure that the mental health impact assessment is now included in all reports. In the context of mental health, I would mention the report of the Adult Mental Health Task Group due to be considered this coming Thursday at the Adult and Health Select Committee meeting. This report is already published as part of the agenda. I would highly recommend it to all members and indeed officers, not least as it recommends mental health training for all of us and as well as that, a set of further recommendations to improve the situation for those with mental health issues. It's all about tackling health inequalities, as per what the Leader has just said. Also here, I raised the need to get right any new contract to cover children's mental health. This is a vital area and one we must simply not miss the opportunity. Still on the health theme, I welcome any Surrey-wide initiative to encourage early uptake of the annual flu jab. Seems to me this is especially important this year. GP surgeries need encouragement to remind those patients entitled to a free jab. Central government money remains a problem, whether it be for the forthcoming review, fairer funding, adult social care or any of these. Protestations by central governments of providing this sum or that sum are largely irrelevant if the result, as so often, is a serious funding gap. If any gap remains, the inevitable consequence is further cuts and continued austerity. Property issues, a welcome to Edward Hawkins, covered later on the agenda, but we need urgently to progress beyond the apparently failed joint venture not to allow continued deterioration of our property assets, to use them wisely, efficiently and cost-effectively. Do we yet have the right resources? Will we now be working at pace? Whatever momentum gained through the property review more than eighteen months ago must not be lost. And I would request the Leader to provide reassurance on the situation with Surrey's commercial property investments, both in respect of the annual valuation and the very latest on rent collection from our tenants. Do these investments produce an actual income currently or is the portfolio now loss-making? How can we work with boroughs and districts, for instance, on the Surrey Place Ambition 2050, again just mentioned, and to enable us to provide the necessary infrastructure to deliver a Surrey-wide vision and strategy, whether it be local plans, housing, affordable homes and to cover any anticipated planning changes? Two final points, Chairman. Firstly, to thank our officers, all staff and partners for the work they have done and are continuing to do in very difficult circumstances. Secondly, to give our support and very best wishes to Colin Kemp. We look forward to seeing him again soon. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Darby. And I now call Mr Bottom. Chris, you have three minutes.
Thank you very much indeed, Chairman, and I certainly associate myself with the remarks of councillor Darby in respect of the support of officers and particularly good wishes to councillor Kemp. The Leader said many welcome things. What I really would counsel is that we are careful about how we say these things and we are careful about the tone of how we approach some of the complex challenges which face us. My concern about local community networks, apart from not really understanding what they mean, is that they could be seen by our colleagues in boroughs and districts as another high-handed attempt to hijack debates and relationships with communities. I hope that is not the case, but it's absolutely essential that we strengthen our partnership working and are seen to be thoughtful and sensitive to colleagues across local government in Surrey. It is absolutely essential that we are sufficiently humble and sufficiently modest in terms of achieving our partnerships, which will themselves help us to achieve the outcomes that we are looking for. We have to remember that for many of us, our inboxes are full of concerns, complaints and criticisms of council delivering services. We have to remember that our reputation has fundamentally to be based on competence and compassion. And before we become too overblown in our ambition, we need to make sure that we've got those things right. I fully welcome the focus on economic growth. What I would say, and this is again relevant to what I've just been saying, our economic growth is dependent, in my view, on affordable housing and a workforce that can sustain the public sector within Surrey. Affordable housing is currently delivered and will be delivered until it's changed by boroughs and districts. And we need to work carefully with them to ensure that our economic plan for development fully embraces the challenges of retaining and supplying an effective workforce, particularly with the challenge of Brexit coming up. I'd also like to say that I think there are significant advances being made by this council in relation to its development of scrutiny. I pay tribute to councillor O'Reilly and the work that he did all that time ago to refocus and rebase the work of scrutiny and to all my colleagues, the Chairman and Vice Chairman's Subcommittee, who have continued to strengthen the work of scrutiny across this council. I think it's something we should be very proud of. Since we last met, Chairman, there has been a significant change in the way services are delivered in Surrey by the opening of schools. And I would not feel happy if I did not pay tribute, from my own perspective as a governor and as an ex-teacher, to the work that Surrey teachers and Surrey head teachers have done to reopen schools in the most challenging circumstances, to provide in most cases very robust online learning where that's necessary and to manage a safe transition from homeworking to schoolwork. I think we owe a huge debt to our teachers and our schools and I'd like to pay tribute to the work that they have done. Finally, Chairman, I think it's important to say that the ambitions for the council are ambitions that we all share. What matters is the way we do it. What matters is the tone of our utterance and our competence and compassion as we go forward. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Bottom. So we have Jonathan Essex with a question.
Thank you. And I'm sure we could all agree with your closing words that we should all be ready to embrace change instead of waiting to see what government says is best for our county and fighting for our residents. And with that in mind, I want to ask about something which you mentioned at the start of your talk, when you called for us to take a lead in test and trace, which the government, I understand, says we can now do. In the last few days, concerned residents have asked me if it's possible to test schoolchildren who have now been sent home for the second time already, that's four weeks already out of their final year before taking GSCSEs, noting to me the apparent spare capacity at the drive-throughs at Chessington and Gatwick. Is it possible for us to act or at least, you know, ask the government if we can have permission to act, you know, to avoid having whole year groups spending weeks at a time at home over the coming months? Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs Meele.
Hi. Does the Leader agree with me that the Surrey Virtual Wellbeing Hub has proved a welcome addition to the raft of new measures to reach out and enable those with mental health issues? As it has clearly been a major asset, having helped more than six hundred and fifty people with mental health issues in just four months. You referred to adapting to help our communities and empowering resilient and connected communities. As a member of the Mental Health Task Group, I welcome this virtual wellbeing hub, which is part of a wider strategy to advance mental health in Surrey.
Mr Robert Evans.
Thank you very much, Chair. And can I also thank and associate myself with remarks to thank the staff, all the staff, not just at County Hall or wherever they are remotely, but also all across the whole county for their tremendous work in very trying circumstances? And also to associate myself with the very best wishes to councillor Colin Kemp. Um, the leader and colleagues will know my support for unitary authorities. Uh, I don't believe that the present two or three tier system of local government is the most efficient or the most economical. Uh, and I think it's right that government is looking at it again, and the government has signalled it. Though those who say we didn't know anything about this, it's been signalled by the government repeatedly over the last year or more. So I do actually applaud the leader for engaging with the government and looking forward to try and see what the alternatives are. I've been a member of the cross-party group under Helen Clapp, and I know I've had discussions with several members and with the leader uh, following a paper that I put out and following the leader's um presentations of ideas from the council. But the members will have seen that the response to the Covid nineteen crisis in the north of England has been through regional mayors. Now, I wonder whether the leader could elaborate a bit more on what discussions he may have had with Luke Hall or with Mr Clark before his demise on the possibility of a county mayor for Surrey and/or a regional mayor for this region? And what are the financial incentives currently being offered by the government for regional mayors uh, to be adopted as a policy? Uh, and with his crystal ball by his side, uh, what does the leader feel is the percentage chances at the moment of us having Surrey County Council elections as before next year in May? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Evans. David Harmer.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I always, when times are really difficult, uh, what is my primary concern? The protection of democracy itself in our country and at every level. And so I am a particular fan of the approach that the leader has described of having a community-level democracy. But um, the rural areas who I represent, which is about half the rural areas of Waverley, I guess, just under, uh, are really concerned that if we uh make the community democratic level a combination of town and country, they will get trampled on by the towns and their views will be ignored effectively. And so it seems to me that we have to be cautious about this because, you know, part of the Surrey deal is that we have a wonderful rural zone or zones and those need to be protected and the people in the towns may well have other priorities which will override those. So I'd like to ask the leader if he would be cautious in the arrangements that are made so that effectively uh, the rural areas have the opportunity effectively to have a voice of their own. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mary Lewis.
Thank you, Chairman. Like Mrs Muir and the Mental Health Task Group, I am strongly focused on the need to support our residents of all ages um, in issues of mental health, particularly in the current crisis. Does the leader agree with me that Mr Darby's rather unfortunate throwaway remarks about missing opportunities on the recommissioning of the CAMHS contract seriously underestimates the level of officer, member and partner focus on this issue at the moment? We've been working to transform emotional wellbeing and health, mental health services across the county for some time. This council adopted the Thrive model of early intervention, which has been built in to the service model that was specified as we went out to open tender. Our officers and commissioning team have developed with the leadership of Dave Hill an alliance of local and national partners to ensure that these changes are made. And this alliance made a bid into for the new service. Uh, another significant achievement has been getting our CCG colleagues to agree to ring-fence a serious amount of money for early intervention within the contract so that the voluntary, community and faith sector in Surrey can do the work that we need them to do to transform the services and to get help to children and young people early. Given this context, I think throwaway remarks are both unnecessary and are destabilising to something that is getting our serious attention. And I hope the leader agrees with me about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Lewis. And finally, Mr Ramsdale.
Thank you, Chairman. And Leader, can I thank you in particular for that excellent statement and the positive news it contains? Um, I particularly like the analysis for the potential for a single unitary authority, but I know there's much debate to be had there. The Covid issue, of course, is top in many of our minds. And Covid has had an exceptional impact on all of us and like others, I join in thanking and recognising the efforts of all of the staff to provide the excellent services that I think um, the County Council has been able to achieve, maintain or indeed enhance to meet the growing need. Um, but the accountant in me is saying, but at what cost? Uh, what has the financial impact been on the council? Um, not just the direct cost, um, but the extent that they have been, and not just the direct cost and the extent that they've been refunded by central government, but what is our overall financial position? Um, I'm very aware that some activities will have had to cost more, you know, to get over the impact of Covid, the extra requirements, not just things like P P E. But other services have perhaps been able to make savings where contractors haven't been able to get out and do jobs or do work. So um, what is the overall position? So Leader, please, how are we doing financially? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Wyatt. And I've got two late, late shows, sorry, Leader. Julie Isles and Chris Townsend. First, Julie, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I wanted to pick up on the remarks that Chris Bottom made, thanking our teachers and all of the support staff at the schools and also the governing bodies and everybody else who has worked so hard to get our children safely back to school. We have worked very hard with them on health and safety risk assessments and with public health colleagues to make sure that that return is as smooth as possible, which leads me into some of the comments that Jonathan Essex made. There are testing issues, we know that, it's a national picture. We are making every representation that we can. It isn't um that we can't get the tests conducted at the drive-throughs, as I understand it, it is the lab capacity. And we have done the very best with each school setting to make sure that the children being sent home are as few as possible working within their socially-distanced bubbles. But I would also um pick up on the final comments that Wyatt made. One of the reasons it is so important to get our children back to school is for the mental health and wellbeing. And if we can't continue to keep them at school, then we know that there will be fallout from that. And whilst some of the services have been able to recognise additional costs upfront, say for example, P P E in the care homes and so on, we are expecting that there will be some additional costs for children's services to address some of the issues that have not yet become apparent when things such as education, healthcare plans have been delayed. So our schools will be working very hard to make sure that children are settled this first half turn back and then we can do a proper assessment on whether there is actually an underlying condition or whether it is simply that there is some development delay because of people being out of school. So I want to assure members that we are working on that with our very dedicated and professional schools and teaching colleges.
Thank you, Julie. And finally, finally, Chris Townsend.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I was interested in the leader's comments about local area, community, groupings or whatever. Uh, I'd like to know from the leader exactly what powers they might have, or will they be just another talking shop? If we're going to go down this road, we need people to be engaged and therefore the opportunity to make decisions. I'd like to know what the leader thinks about whether they're going to be a talking shop or whether they're going to actually have powers. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. Leader, over to you.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and thank you very much for the comments and questions. Um, and there are some sort of, some common themes here, starting with mental health. Um, I think we all absolutely recognise um the significant impact Covid nineteen and in social isolation uh, has had on people's mental health and wellbeing. Um, and it is a huge priority for this council and indeed for Surrey Hartlands' health system. So I think that we've seen the recommendations from the Mental Health Task Group, which will come to Cabinet at the end of this month. Uh, I believe all of those recommendations will be adopted and we will set out in more detail at the Cabinet meeting exactly what we can do, what more we can do to help with those, with that issue. And I'll pick up Bernie Muir's point perhaps at this stage, which is the Surrey, the Virtual Wellbeing Hub has been hugely successful. I mean, it isn't just about mental health, it's about general, it's sort of emotional wellbeing and would encourage people to access as if they think it's appropriate. Um, with Surrey Hartlands, we are putting in a bid for, there is a four million pound pilot budget for green prescribing, which will absolutely look at all ways in which, you know, activities can help those with either physical or mental health needs. Um, so we will see if we can get ourselves on to that pilot because there's some very good opportunities there, I think, to fund some local charities that work in that area. And just going back to CAMHS, I wouldn't presume to say what Nick Darby said or otherwise. I'd written it down to say that we should not miss the opportunity, rather than that we have missed the opportunity. But I think the point is, Mary's, Lewis's point is well made. Um, there has been an enormous amount of work done by Dave Hill and since on looking at how we can better deliver or facilitate um, the mental health services for children and adolescents. Um, it's a really difficult area and one that we all recognise has not been, uh, you know, has not been as good as, anywhere near as good as we would have wanted. Um, the conversations that are being had with the four organisations that have come together have been positive and I believe if we can deliver those through the procurement process, will have a major impact. The key to this, a key part of this is early intervention, early diagnosis and then early intervention where that can't be prevented in the first place. And as Mary says, there's significant funding going in both from this council and from the health system. So I hope that we will get to a good position at the end of this year or early part of next year when that procurement process would have finished. And I don't think Nick Darby was suggesting that anything other than that that's what he wanted to see. And I'm sure that's all what all of us want to see and we will work as hard as we can to deliver that. Just picking up another, a couple of other points that Nick Darby made. Um, I mean, I agree on the optimisation of the property estate. It's, we have a sizable estate here, it is challenging. Um, I have been probably as noisy as anybody else in terms of putting real momentum, resource behind it. I think we're getting to that point now where we will start to see things actually happening on the ground, so to speak. Um, so I think the team is now in place and we will move forward with that strategy that we agreed last year as a council. On the investment property, I mean, it's difficult to answer that question and we will cover that in due course. I think the, if you, any property, if you take it at a moment in time, it has a value and that value changes um, with circumstances and the state of the market. Um, the only relevance to the value at the time is if you crystallise it. Uh, we have no plans to dispose of any of our properties. Uh, we will, you know, it is a challenging environment out there. Um, we are not, as a council, hugely exposed in any way to commercial property. Um, but we are working with our advisers to make sure that uh, that we work within the government guidelines in terms of responding to tenants' requests and so on. Uh, and I think, you know, that will work its way through the system over time. To Chris Bottom's points about competence and compassion, and I think those are two excellent words. Everything I say, I hope, uh, and the tone, you know, the tone of my statement and I hope generally is all about demonstrating that this County Council um, needs to be and indeed is competent in the way it goes about its business. You know, this is a serious organisation with some serious responsibilities and it is absolutely right that we have, we deliver those services competently and with compassion. I mean, we have the challenges of adult social care and children with special education needs particularly, which do need compassion. Uh, you know, we don't have limited, unlimited funds, so we have to, we have to be realistic in terms of what we can do. Um, but I would hope that the, and I'm sure that the officers that work in that area are in a, you know, very challenging frontline service, do act with compassion. And I agree that I think this council generally should do the same. Um, we will need and must focus on our economy. The only way that we can help our residents get through this long term is to make sure that we have a sustainable economy and we will do everything that we can with partners, with the Leps, with the district and boroughs, with businesses uh, to make sure that we have a plan. There will be an economic strategy coming to council at the end of this year, um, taking on board all of the work that's been done by the Commission, by the University of Surrey and other organisations. Uh, and that will include, the Surrey One Growth Board is all about growth and about uh, the whole way in which services are delivered to residents and addressing those needs. So Surrey Future, which is the district borough-led organisation chaired by Rob Moran, the Chief Exec of Elham Bridge Borough Council, are working closely with the Growth Board to look at housing. And I mean, it's a difficult subject, challenging subject, in terms of local plans made more complicated perhaps by the government's current consultation. Um, but we do have to find a way of being able to deliver collectively housing that is affordable, genuinely affordable for younger people in particular. Uh, we do have an aging population here and we are losing young families, well, young families aren't moving in and, you know, children, when they go to university, don't often come back or to live in Surrey. Um, so we do need to address the housing issue. And then just finally on Chris Bottom's comments on scrutiny, I'm very pleased that you feel as chair of the chairs that it is working better. Uh, you know, it was a commitment to ensure that all policy decisions and issues went to the scrutiny committees before coming to Cabinet. And I hope and believe that we've delivered on that. And there's been some fantastic work that has been done, particularly in the working groups, the mental health one being just the most recent example. On to Jonathan Essex, I think Julie Isles has picked up the substantive point. Uh, we would like local testing facilities and testing centres and to have those, to have that sort of local lab capacity or access to that local lab capacity. That's something that we have raised through public health and will do what we can to achieve that. So I think that's generally the direction of travel. Um, so hopefully we will be able to access those facilities in the not-too-distant future. Um, I'm not going to speak at length on I'm not going to speak at length on the unitaries, because I suspect we will have a little bit of a conversation about that on the motion down the line. I'll just deal specifically though with Robert Evans' questions. I have had no conversations with ministers or indeed with any of the officials regarding mayors. My own personal view is that I don't think Surrey at the moment is suitable for a directly elected mayor. I think that's more relevant to metro areas. I don't about a county mayor. I think that we have almost, well, we have a ceremonial chairman, which I think, you know, acts as the mayor, does so very well. But I don't think in terms of a directly elected official that that's probably a necessary step for us to take at this stage. But one of the justifications for having, opening the unitary debate was to seek from government a growth deal. And that is absolutely something that we were pushing hard with both with our Surrey MPs and with NHLCG. We need a growth deal. It varies as to what that is worth. I think 30 million or so is a number that regularly appears. But at the end of the day, off the back of our economic strategy and the work that the one Surrey Growth Board has done, we will have a very good case to put to government, using some of the stuff that we had done in the unitary review to argue for and I hope secure a growth deal. Disappointingly for you, Robert, there will be an election next May. So you better get out there and knock on a few doors, because I can 100% assure you that there will be an election and we are very much looking forward to that. To David Harmer, I think the work has started and we'll now, we'll go into more detail in terms of exactly what the local community networks are about and how that will operate at a local level. This completely addresses your point about not having one size fits all. This is to ensure that rural areas are respected and whatever solutions and powers they are given are suitable for their area as opposed to other parts of the county. So on that point, I'm anticipating that we will have a member seminar in the middle of next month, where every member will have the opportunity, I hope, to input into the structure of local community networks and how they will operate. And to pick up Chris Townsend's point, that, yeah, this won't be another talking shop, absolutely not another talking shop. This will be a doing forum, however you want to term it, but it will be. And there will be a list of local assets that organisations might want to take responsibility for. But it will absolutely be about being engaged with those communities and addressing the issues as they see them and giving them the power to do that and I'm sure some funds to go alongside it. And then the final point, Mr. Chairman, is Wyatt Ramsdale has asked about our financial position. I think as of the last Cabinet report, we have currently a £9 million funding gap for this year. As a percentage of the billion pound budgets that we have, nine million is eminently doable in terms of narrowing that gap. I mean, there are areas, I mean, this is, you know, this council has the challenges of demand services. So in adult social care and in children's services, we do not know at the beginning of the year what that demand will look like. So it is always, always has to be a flexible budget. The majority of the overspend actually relates to SCND. The Covid costs have broadly been covered by government. The Secretary of State did announce yesterday a further billion in tranche four. It's not yet clear how that will be distributed. But I'm confident, absolutely confident, that we will deliver a balanced budget this year. We will be bringing to Cabinet in November and on to council a budget in November, which will review the MTFS for next year. We are, there is currently, again, a shortfall, a gap. But we will be bringing a balanced budget to council to consider in November. So I think financially, we are in as good a shape as we could expect to be, considering the circumstances, not of our own making. I hope, Mr. Chairman, that that's picked up the majority of the points that people raised. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Leader. Right, before we move to item six, I just want to notify members that Will Forster has amended his motion, which is forthcoming in due course, and we have circulated it. Apologies for such late notice, but members do have this and apparently it is an agreed motion. But at least members now have time between now and the item being raised to have a look at the amended motion. I just thought I would mention it now before I move to item six, which is members' question time, page nine of the supplementary agenda that you've got. I've had notice of 22 questions, five minutes per question for supplementary questions, and these must be framed as questions, please, not statements, and be relevant to the original question. This question time will be limited to 45 minutes, at which point I will finish the question we're on and close the item. And if any questions are not covered during the 45 minutes, a written answer has been tabled and members can, of course, follow up the relevant Cabinet member after the meeting. There will be an additional 15 minutes for members to ask questions of Cabinet members based on the Cabinet member briefings on page 29 of the supplementary agenda. And these, as always, will be taken on a first-come, first-served basis and there will be no supplementaries. So let's move to question one. Mr. Robert Evans, do you have a supplementary?
Well, thank you, Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank the Cabinet member for the response. We are in the business, as the leader has said, about setting high standards and everything. I was a little bit disappointed in the response that it didn't really set a high target and be more ambitious in the levels of recycling that Surrey should be doing and the variations with different boroughs, because I think we can be more imaginative even in these difficult times. Thank you.
Thank you. Item question two, Andrew Povey, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, please, Chairman. First of all, may I thank the Cabinet member for his response? And I'm very pleased to see that Crown High Street will be included in the lane rental scheme. I think the question I have there is, in view of so much on our agenda today being about local consultation and local engagement, can he give us more reassurance that these sorts of works on the highways that seem to be increasing partly because of the house building, that local members will be kept better informed in future and indeed brought into the discussion, if necessary, as to when some of these things should go ahead? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Povey. Next question, Mr. Darby, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No supplementary. Thanks very much for the reply.
Thank you. Question four, Mike Goodman. I understand you do have a supplementary.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. And also thank you to Natalie for an excellent answer and also for a cabinet update that she gave. This really does demonstrate the excellent work that you and the team are doing in delivering Surrey County Council's climate change strategy. It is about action now and really you need all the credit that is going. Surrey are certainly, in my view, leading the way across the UK in actually tackling climate change. But my question for them is about the grant that has been secured for Lowcase. This really is excellent news for residents and I ask for you to explain how the system's going to work and what is the benefit for our residents and our businesses in Surrey. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Natalie, before you come back, I've got another question from Jonathan Essex.
Thank you, and I'd like to congratulate the Cabinet member and her team successfully. It's in particular on the Green Homes Local Authority Delivery Programme. Ask how many of Surrey's 600,000 or thereabouts homes this will retrofit? And does it include any funds for retraining Surrey residents who are out of work to do this task?
Thank you. Mrs. Bramble.
Thank you, Chairman, and I'd like to thank the councillors for their questions. In regard to Robert Evans' question, I'd like to say to him that we're actually doing very well as a county. I had the figures today that came out. They haven't been published yet, but I'm sure you'll be pleased to know that Surrey County Council now reuse, recycle or compost 56% of all of our rubbish, and that puts us at third in the country. So I think that's very good and I think we've moved forward well there. With regard to the question from councillor Goodman, thank you for your supplementary. Just to let you know that Surrey County Council has secured EU investment through Lowcase, which is low carbon across the South East, worth approximately £6 million. Contract documents will be signed in early November and the programme will be launched soon after and will run until June 2023. The programme will be promoted to SME businesses across the county through a number of channels and we will be partnering with the boroughs and districts as well as the Chamber of Commerce with our promotional activity. SME businesses will be eligible for a grant of up to 50% for either energy efficiency measures, such as replacing lighting with LEDs, or low carbon measures, i.e. switching from a diesel to an electric taxi. Alternatively, they can sign up for 10 hours of support, which is equivalent to environmental standards SO14001, which helps reduce negative environmental impacts of businesses. Throughout the programme, we will monitor the amount of carbon saved as well as the financial benefit to SME businesses from our reduced energy and fuel bills. And thank you for your supplementary, councillor Essex. I'll come back to you with a written answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Question five, Richard Borch, do you have a supplementary?
No, thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to thank the Cabinet member for a full and complete answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Question six, Mrs. Young.
I don't have a supplementary. I'd like to thank the Cabinet member for her comprehensive answer and also to thank everybody involved in these matters.
Thank you. Question seven, Bernie Muir.
I don't have a supplementary question, but I would like to thank the Cabinet member for this project, for the answer, because I think community assets, activities and strategies are particularly pertinent at this time.
Thank you. Claire Curran, you do have a supplementary?
Thank you, Chairman, yes. Actually, I was delighted to welcome the Deputy Cabinet Member to Buckingham recently to discuss a potential community project which is being promoted and supported by a major voluntary community faith partner. This is a project that could offer scope to transform service delivery in our area and bring huge value to the community of Buckingham and the surroundings. And my question to the Deputy Cabinet member is, couldn't he reassure me and probably other members that if and when communities do put forward schemes for this fund, there will be a clear, timely and transparent process for assessing their feasibility and that projects can move forward with the minimum of delay? Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to respond, please?
Thank you very much, Claire, for the question. Yes, that is a simple answer. It will be a very transparent process. You'll find out, hopefully, at the member seminar on the 23rd of this month, nine o'clock on a Friday. It's very exciting as we launch the project. And all of this sort of information will come out then. But I can assure you that the goal is that there is no bad ideas, no bad schemes. We're going to accept everything and anything. It may not be something that will come through this fund, but the idea is that we will then make sure that there are other avenues, should the scheme be a worthwhile scheme to follow up. But yeah, the whole process will be very transparent, it will be very public facing. It's going to be very exciting and I hope there will be a lot more schemes, like the one you suggested, coming forwards. And can I just say thank you for inviting me to Buckingham? It was wonderful to see such a vibrant High Street, especially in such terrible times. Thank you.
It certainly is. Thank you. Question eight, Alison Griffiths, do you have a supplementary?
I have no supplementary. I'd just like to thank the Cabinet member for my answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Question nine, back to Claire. Do you have a supplementary, Claire Curran?
Yes, please. I'd like to ask the Cabinet member whether the plan that she has outlined is subject to continuous revision as the government continues to revise its own background.
Thank you. Sinead, would you care to respond?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, councillor Curran, for your supplementary question. I'm very pleased to confirm that the action plan is a very fluid plan and is subject to review. And in fact, given the new guidance issued by the government, we will be undertaking a review, hopefully in the next week. Thank you.
Thank you. Question 10, Ken Gilati, do you have a supplementary?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank the leader for his very full answer and I have no supplementary.
Thank you. Question 11, I understand Nick Harrison has a supplementary. Nick, do go ahead.
Oh, thank you, Chairman. And I thank the Cabinet member for the answer. I'm disappointed, though, that the response doesn't tell us the budget which is available and whether it's sufficient to resolve the high-risk wet spots. It also refers to wet spots being defined as only where we have recurring flooding incidents. In one of my roads, we had flooding for probably the first time, but it did substantially impact five properties. Two residents suffered floodwater, which was two foot high, and they will be out of their retirement bungalows for at least six months. I ask officers to give me their analysis of the cause of all the flooding incidents in my division and for the Cabinet member or the Deputy Cabinet member to meet with me on the implementation of improvement. I also ask that the Select Committee for Communities, Environment and Highways set up a task group to review the budget, policy, procedures and action programme to address our flooding risks. And I wonder, Chairman, if you could let John O'Reilly respond to this request. Thank you.
I'm perfectly happy if John O'Reilly's happy and Mr. Furness is happy. Do go ahead, John.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm always very happy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, councillor Harrison, for your question.
Well, just before Matt comes in.
John, do go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to say thanks to Nick for that, and I'm sure the committee will indeed take up his suggestion.
Did you want to say anything? Fine. Thank you. Moving on, question 12, Jonathan Essex, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, please, if I may. May I just restate the initial question, which was for times from July rather than average of times from, figures from April? So is it possible, please, to provide daily figures for both A and B from July 1st, please?
Thank you. Mrs. Turner-Stewart, would you care to respond?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to Jonathan for your supplementary question. As has been stated in the response, we use a measurement, which is that that is used by the Health and Public Safety Inspectorate of Constabulary Fire and Rescue Services. And that is so that our average response times can be benchmarked against all of the other services nationally. The response times are cumulative, so we will have the opportunity at the end of the year to look at the full year quality and ratified performance measures. And we are in a phase transition at the moment, as you know. So currently, we are estimating that that should take nine months, but that can actually be longer, dependent on the very sympathetic and considered conversations and engagement with our staff to ensure that the implementation is mutually agreeable. So those discussions are ongoing. But I would like to thank you for your involvement with the Member Reference Group and for your in-depth questions that have been presented to the Select Committee and to the seminar. And just to restate the commitment of the service to fully support your questions and interests going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Denise, and you've got another supplementary coming on question 13 from Nikki Barton. Nikki, do go ahead.
Hi, thank you very much. Denise, thank you very much for your response. I suppose really following on from councillor Essex, I have a very similar question really, that the aggregate data that's being compiled really hides what's happening in Hazlemere. And from my understanding, the station is regularly being left without any crew at all, relying completely on fire crews being brought in from the surrounding area. And response times are regularly exceeding the target of 10 minutes. Just last night, two incidents attended from crews outside the area with 16 and 19 minute response times. So I, while I understand it's a process of analysis, I'd very much appreciate some more specific data on Hazlemere if at all possible, and maybe you could pay a visit again. It was very much appreciated when you came down to Hazlemere and really address the issues that are of great concern to the community here. Thank you very much.
Denise, do you want to respond?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Nikki, for your supplementary question. And yes, myself and the senior officers would be delighted to attend. We had a very productive and constructive engagement session, which I was very pleased that you organised. As we discussed at that meeting, the needs and the requirements of the Hazlemere area were recognised fully within the Making Surrey Safer Plan. So the whole-time availability was extended to be seven, seven o'clock until seven in the evening, seven in the morning to seven in the evening, seven days a week, to provide that additional cover at weekends. And just in terms of your concerns about hindhead tunnel, which are listed in your question, Surrey Fire and Rescue were heavily involved with the construction and the preparation of the plans for that tunnel. There are a suite of complex fire solutions, regular exercises are undertaken. So the risks that have been identified in that area are fully recognised and managed within the community risk profile. But going back to your invitation, certainly we'll be delighted to, to visit again, as we would any station, and, and have those conversations. So thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, Denise. Question 14, Robert Evans, your second question, Robert, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, very, very briefly, if I may, Chairman, can I thank Denise for her response? But I wonder, can she show us, does she know how many tower blocks there are in Surrey that fall into this category of still failing ACM tests? Thank you.
There is a supplementary before your answer on, from Jonathan Essex. Jonathan?
Thank you. From reading the Grenfell inquiry report, phase one, it suggests lowering the current definition of high-rise from 18 to 11 metres, so that's the height you can reach the standard fire engine. And also extending the list of tower blocks to refit to include those with HPL, which is called high-pressure lavinets, which has got a similar combustibility to the aluminium composite materials in terms of, well, in terms of flammability. Now, is, is that something that, that we have knowledge of in Surrey? And, you know, do we have figures on, on which tower blocks we have in those categories too? Because I think we need to make sure that all of Surrey is safe.
Thank you. Please respond.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to Robert and to Jonathan for your supplementary questions. So Surrey Fire and Rescue Service, as do all services nationally, work with a list that is produced by the Buildings Research Establishment that undertake tests constantly as different materials are evaluated. There are invasive tests and, and tests to determine fire spread at elevation and, and at ground level. The building owners work with our fire safety teams. We have a dedicated fire safety team, which is solely responsible for high-rise in Surrey. That's something that not all services share. And Surrey Fire and Rescue Service have been proactively investigating buildings over 11 metres in height since Grenfell, so they were ahead of the curve there. We are also evaluating sleeping risk assessments, so we're not just looking at high-rise. It's also children's homes, care homes, hospitals, hotels. And as, as you know, from the Making Surrey Safer Plan, the redistribution of our resources was targeted primarily at ensuring that that capacity was available to undertake these absolutely key objectives and priorities going forward. So I hope you're satisfied that Surrey Fire and Rescue Service are equipped, have the capacity and the commitment to, to undertake all of these responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Question 15, Andrew Povey, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, please, Chairman. I do understand that this 2% number comes from what the government says. But I suppose what I'm really asking is, could we have some sort of explanatory note on the council tax leaflet so that it's not seen as misleading by our residents? Thank you.
Mel Fue, could you respond, please?
Thank you for your supplementary. I'll take your comments aboard and discuss it with the people that prepare these documents.
Thank you. Nick Darby, your second question, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. And yes, in the, the first part, part A, which is saying no split of the total price, which I believe is around £50 million. My question is, in a sense, why isn't there a split? We've effectively got three different projects here, a new school firstly, extra care home secondly, office buildings thirdly. I would have expected there to have been some kind of split, even notionally, as part of the appraisal at the time of buying, rather than just all lumped in together. Is there an explanation for, for no split, even, even notionally? The second part, sorry, the, the second part of it is in relation to planning permission. Am I right that it would be Surrey County Council who grants itself planning permission for a new school? Or is it Rye Gate and Banstead?
Leader.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Nick, for the supplementary. I, I don't see what advantage there would be in splitting the value of the site. It will be split in due course when it's divided up and we've built the school and the extra care facilities. At that point, it'd be treated differently, but at the end of the day, we bought the site with the building with the intention of looking to put those two other facilities on there and maybe others. So I, I'm not sure there's any advantage from a rating perspective or anything else in, in doing that. That's right. I think I'm right in saying that the, the county can and will be able to give itself permission to build the school, obviously not the extra care facility, which would be for Rye Gate and Banstead.
14, Jonathan, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, thank you. And, and I'd like to thank the Cabinet member for her answer and the assurance that some small recycling facilities will be brought back in by the end of October. But I'm concerned at the, the notion that recycling of cans, plastic bottles and containers are considered largely redundant. And I'd like to ask that they review how much of those materials was actually collected from the CRCs before the, the Covid lockdown? And, and consider that it might be possible to bring these back into, to, because if residents do have more recycling than they can fill in their recycling bin in a particular week, residents do go down to the CRCs and, and do recycling because they are our recycling centres. So it'd be really good news if they could perhaps be brought back by the end of October too. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie, please respond.
Thank you, Chairman, and, and thank you, Jonathan, for your supplementary. We will look at that for you. I think it, it's fair to say that most of our boroughs and districts now collect all those items that you were talking about from the curbside. There's only one really that doesn't, which I, it was outlined in my, in my response. But I will get officers to check that through for you and we can have a talk about that offline at some stage. Thank you.
Thank you. Question 18, Nikki Barton, do you have a supplementary?
No supplementary, thank you.
Thank you. 19, Robert Evans, third question. Robert, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you very much, yes, I do, because I'm disappointed, I have to say, with the, the response because the question was specifically about retention of senior officers in the Surrey Fire and Rescue Service, not recruitment. The £4,500 extra allowance in London Fire Brigade may be a reason why some staff are leaving, but in the leaving interviews or in a survey, more members of Surrey Fire and Rescue Service officers leaving quoted bullying by management and the new 12-hour shifts. More of them said that than the money. Does this not concern the Cabinet member? Thank you.
Thank you. Denise.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to Robert for restating your question. I would like to assure you that much time and attention is given at very frequent meetings, monthly meetings and conversations in between about workforce management. The development and upskilling, training and promotion opportunities are very extensive throughout the service, and I have had many conversations firsthand with members of staff who are very motivated around the opportunities that Surrey Fire and Rescue present. I think it's important to recognise that Surrey Fire and Rescue Service is a service made up of many exceptional individuals, members of staff who are highly skilled, passionate, dedicated to their public safety role, fire safety, business safety, water safety, wildfire prevention, training and development, on-call support and our response, prevention and protect, protection teams. They all have decades of experience and expertise, and they inspire and mentor our new recruits and our inter-service transferies who come in bringing a wealth of experience and competence. Our staff are our service, and our senior leadership officers are committed to enabling and supporting every member of staff, every officer and every firefighter to be their best for the residents of Surrey. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Darby, your third question, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you, Chairman. No, no supplementary.
Thank you. Item 21, Jonathan Essex, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, briefly, I wonder if it's possible to, to investigate what would it be needed to bring Surrey's new HQ from being rated as a C to being rated as an A? And then see how much money that would be required to bring it about? And in terms of the travel plan noted as a first step, and that there's both intermediate and long-term solutions, is that travel plan able to be shared so that it can have inputs from councillors, staff and the public?
Thank you. And before the leader responds, Claire Curran has, has a supplementary.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I too visited the new site on, on the same day, and I was impressed, so impressed by that airy and bright building and the, the wonderful campus grounds. And I'm sure that the ambiance and the natural light that there is there will inspire creativity across, through, through, for everyone who gets the opportunity to work there. And my question is that I understand from officers that Cannon have moved to a new building in West London. And I wondered whether anybody has contacted the property team at Cannon to see what they have done differently at their new building? And whether there is any learning that we as a new tenant into that building can take to change, or to change what happens in our new building based on the practice of the tenants who have moved out?
Thank you, Claire. Leader.
Thank you, Chairman. I can't give a, a, a simple answer to Jonathan Essex's question about what we would need to do to get it to an energy efficient rating of A. And there is mention in the, in the answer of looking at introducing LED lights. That, that I'm sure would have some impact, but happy that the officers have a, have a look at that and see what, what, what could be done and indeed then the cost of doing that. But it is, you know, considering it is 20 years old, it is a very good energy efficient building. On the travel plan, yes, certainly, when, when that is, when that's completed, that will be shared with members. I, I, I wouldn't necessarily commit to share that with, with residents for consultation. But I'm sure that the members will, will have an input, and if, if it's relevant to discuss it with residents, then I'm sure we, we will do that. But I'm imagining that, that, you know, it will include, or will look at options around walking, cycling, and I'm, I'm hoping that's sort of an electric minibus shuttle service of some sort. So that, that plan will be developed and that will be shared through the Select Committee, as I imagine, with, with members. To Claire Curran's question, I mean, there's been certainly liaison with, with Cannon during the sort of handover period. I don't know whether the officers have asked them for any suggestions as to what they might do differently. I mean, the focus has been on fitting out the, the floors. There has been, the only upgrading work that has needed to be done is, is in relation to, to wifi five cabling, which is, which will be completed by the end of, middle of December. Other than that, I'm not sure. The, so we'll, we'll certainly, I'll certainly put that to the officers and see if there's anything that Cannon might like to add. I mean, they've been very good in, in terms of leaving us with a considerable amount of equipment and cabling for all sorts of, you know, CC, not CC, for, for cameras and, and so on. There is one point actually on the ground floor which might affect the efficiency, that they, they split that into different conference rooms and there is, there are air conditioning units in those. I don't know, perhaps if those were removed, that would, that would improve the efficiency rating. But we're, I'll ask the officers to pick up the points made by both of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. And finally, Jonathan Essex, do you have a supplementary to question 22?
Yes, and I would like to thank for the very interesting and full answer provided, which shows, I think, if I'm right, that there are now less free bus places being provided and also less discretionary bus places. And I understand that, you know, that there is a relation of that to Covid. But I, I would wonder if it's possible to provide some assurance that coming out of Covid, we have a post-Covid plan that encourages more to travel to, to school on, on a bus, especially for those for whom walking or cycling is too far a distance, so that we don't have more car dependency in the, in the home-to-school journeys. I think that's particularly important if we're going to move to a sustainable, sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Julie Als, would you reply, please?
I will. Thank you, councillor Essex. And we did do a lot of analysis around this. You're right in saying that some of it is Covid-related. And we did provide additional bus services to make them closed-door services to address some of the concerns that people might have had about not maintaining social distancing. And I think we had about 65 separate routes that were identified to put additional buses onto. That, that funding remains now for the second half term as well. So we will be reviewing our arrangements as we go through that, councillor Essex, and I hope that is helpful.
Thank you very much indeed. That's it for the questions. We do have some time for any members who want to ask questions of Cabinet members. So I'll wait a little while because we haven't got any indications as yet. If you'd indicate now. Claire Curran, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a question for Mel Fue about a property matter. I am really reassured, and I'm sure many members are, that the property team is now, as he says, at full strength. And also I was pleased to hear the leader say that they now have the appropriate momentum and resource for the future. And as well as delivering the very significant Woodhatch County Hall project, please can the Cabinet member assure me that there will now be the capacity in the team to drive through other local property projects which may not have the county-wide significance of the Woodhatch move, but are of really high importance in local communities? And I'm sure that he will know that I have one particular local project in mind. Thank you, Chairman.
Mel, over to you.
Yes, I can assure councillor Curran that this item is right at the top of my agenda as with another 14. But generally speaking, the answer is yes, I get a weekly update and we pursue it religiously to ensure that there is progress being made on this long outstanding item.
Thank you. Nick Harrison.
Thank you, Chairman. Would I ask Natalie Bramall about the CRC in Epsom? It has been a bit of a problem, to say the least. Could she give us some more details about the system and when this would start? Thank you.
Thank you. Over to you, Natalie.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Nick, for your question. It was quite gratifying, actually, Nick, when you emailed me to say that only one of your residents had been in contact with you with regard to the Epsom CRC. There were a, a number of residents that contacted me directly saying that they were very unhappy with having to queue to get into the CRC. Also, one retailer in the road contacted me to say that he, he was having difficulty getting deliveries in and out. We therefore, after discussion with officers, we therefore decided to trial a booking system, which which will be starting on the 5th of November and we're also bringing in automatic number plate recognition as well, because we know that there are a number of people that come from outside of the county that use that facility, so we will be able to catch them. That's happening on the 5th. I signed off very early this morning, some communications around that, so that will be distributed to residents in Epsom and Newell and obviously across to your area in Rygate and Banstead as well in the very, very near future, as well as updates going on to our website at Surrey. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. And finally, Jonathan Essex.
Thank you. It's a question to Deputy Cabinet Member Marissa Heath with regard to registration. At the last cabinet meeting, I asked Cabinet Member Julie Isles about the registrar's service and in particular that the Rygate one is currently closed due to social distancing and I wondered if it's been looked at the possibility of re-providing the service at the new county hall, maybe from January or something like that.
Marissa, if you'd care to reply, please.
Sorry.
We can see you, Marissa, but we can't hear you.
You're on mute.
You're on mute, Marissa.
Battery's running out in my notes, it would appear. Can you hear me now? Apology, Chairman. Yes, councillor Essex, we're coming up with a plan now to look at how we can bring facilities into places where we can do social distancing and ensure we keep up with the demand for registration. I don't know if that specific facility has been looked at, but certainly I'm due to have a meeting with the team, I think, next Monday, so I'll raise it with them and I'll come back to you on email with any views from them as to whether that's a possibility. But I know, I mean, the team's been doing quite a good job of keeping up with things now and catching up with the backlog and things, so I'm quite confident we'll find a way of doing something if this situation continues. So yeah, I'll come back to you, councillor Essex, on your specific point.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that ends members' question time. Excellent. Moving to item seven, statement by members on local issues, no notices of statements have been received, so we can move right on to item eight, original motions. There are only 90 minutes for this deliberation in total and I've received notice of four motions, so if you could make your submissions as concise, I'm not limiting you in any way, as possible, we should be able to get all four in within the time scale. The first motion, 8.1, is standing in the name of Mr Nick Darby. Understanding Order 12.3, council has to decide if it wishes to debate this motion today, so does council wish to debate the motion now?
Yes, please.
Yeah. Agreed. Agreed.
Thank you. So you can move the motion, you've got a maximum of six minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. I will start with some emphasis in relation to the motion itself. What we're seeking is a full public written report on the bid to include the process used to launch the bid and authorised expenditure, the rationale for developing the bid now and to understand the full cost of the bid so far and any other relevant information. So that's the emphasis at the beginning. I have to say disappointing is the word here. Damage to our reputation, not putting residents first, wasted taxpayers' money. Working together should be what it's all about at all levels and at all times, as I've said earlier. I will concentrate on two issues. Firstly, reputational damage, then the issue of taxpayers' money. Reputational damage covers both our residents who pay council tax and all those who work with us, obviously including boroughs and districts. So was ploughing ahead with a bid for Surrey to become a single unitary the right thing at this time? It takes time to build relationships. It's all too easy to knock them down with the inevitable loss of confidence. It equally inevitably takes time to rebuild. Those who might be supporters are alienated before we even start the debate. So it seems to have been with the boroughs and districts. We do good work together, for instance, the Surrey Place Ambition 2050 and work for working for growth. We should not act in a way which jeopardises that, yet this is precisely what has happened. And where were residents in all of this? Included from the beginning or as so often the case, given the impression it was a done deal? Consultation has a poor reputation for good reason, done to provide a fig leaf to a decision already made. From my observation, Surrey were encouraged to prepare a bid early to get in quick despite Covid, despite Brexit and despite the need to allow time for recovery. In effect, the decision to press for a unitary authority was made already, no prior debate. Evidence, a business case was to be considered later. What did we get? Where was the detail for a true business case entirely lacking? Much bandying about of large figures sounding impressive, but nothing to back it up. In my view, completely the wrong way round. There was eventually a note to residents, eventually a phone survey, but both late in the process, not at the very beginning. The result of the latter hardly shouted from the rooftops. For members, an emergency extra council meeting scheduled, pulled in favour of a briefing, itself pulled and everything now on hold. We know now as of yesterday that Surrey are not being invited to make a bid at this stage. Turning to costs, we must never forget we are dealing with residents' money. What have we spent so far on the intended bid? It seems £71,000 on initial research, £97,500 on what is described as a comprehensive business case, £37,970 on a phone survey and focus groups, £33,866 on a leaflet and postage, £15,000 at £5,000 per month on public affairs support and £69,514 on a senior policy lead. The total is not far short of £350,000, no doubt much higher if officer time is included. Is it really right to suggest this might be useful later? Time marches on, things change. What was the budget? Where was this included in this year's Surrey budget? Surely money we can ill afford at the present time? Certainly it's a far cry from the £50,000 cost, I believe, mentioned by the leader not long ago when interviewed on Dragon Radio. And are we not just a little accident prone here? The wasted cost for the intended purchase of the new HQ in Woking was £183,000, halted because one of the existing occupiers wouldn't move out. The unitary bid, wasn't it reasonable to assess the risk, I suggest a real one, of a government delay or change of mind? Are we somehow going to be repaid these costs? For Woking, wouldn't it have been prudent to make sure of getting full possession first before spending significant sums? So the total is well over £500,000, half a million. What services could have been provided or saved, bearing in mind constant cuts over 10 years, still continuing, austerity still to the fore and no doubt more to come? This cost is equivalent to say 300 payments of band-de-council tax. Another way of looking at it, we could have avoided needing to save the cuts in our mental health budget. So my questions, would the leader do the same thing again? What might he do differently? And what should we now be doing? What are we doing to repair the reputational damage? I do therefore invite full public disclosure in respect of the issue set out in the motion. Yesterday's news, though finally providing much-needed clarity, makes no difference to our request, namely to understand the process and rationale so residents are aware and also to have full knowledge of the costs. In other words, to confirm a commitment to real transparency. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Darby. Mr Kingston, you're seconding the motion. Will you speak now or do you wish to reserve your position?
I wish to reserve my position, Chairman.
Thank you. So the matter is open for debate. If you would register as to whether you wish to speak. No one's registered, so moving to Mr Kingston. Would you like to speak? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Chairman, Residents' Association and independent councils have tabled this motion because it is crucial that the residents of Surrey know the reasons behind the ill-timed and increasingly expensive bid for unitary status with its key themes of Tory secrecy, confusion over costs and councillor Oliver's regular U-turns. For Mr Chairman, this whole project has been a Tory-to-Tory secret conversation to the exclusion of others. Secret talks with Conservative ministers followed by secret talks with Surrey's Conservative MPs. It's significant that at the outset, there was no consultation with the leaders of Surrey, boroughs and districts, and there was certainly no consultation with residents. And unfortunately for councillor Oliver, he also didn't consult the Prime Minister. And we all know what Boris thought of his premature plan. And because of the Prime Minister's intervention, we had that fascinating last Friday and Saturday in September when the bid was off and then it was on again. Although I'm sure that we were not supposed to know of councillor Oliver's double U-turn because like so much of councillor Oliver's approach to this affair, he only felt the need to tell his Conservative colleagues via his social media account. And Mr Chairman, there is that issue of costs. Interviewed by YouTube in Surrey Dragon last September, councillor Oliver struggled to give an answer, eventually suggesting a figure of about 50K. However, thanks to the work of opposition councillors, we do now have some of those figures, quarter of a million and rising. But then yesterday, we learned of another change with a plan put in abeyance because Robert Jenrick has confirmed what we already knew, Surrey County Council is not on his early bid list. Mr Chairman, the pantomime season may have been cancelled in the theatres, but this Conservative administration is at least keeping its spirit alive. However, the delay in the unitary bid does not mean that there should be any delay in this council being provided with a full public written report and the process so far covering all the issues raised in this motion. Public accountability and openness, virtues of unitary government, so we are told, require that we use this downtime from Project Unitary to understand and get the full costs of this now delayed bid. Mr Chairman, I'm sure that all members of the ruling party will want to join us and vote for such openness and accountability. Therefore, I second the motion and I look forward to reading the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Kingston. Mr Darby, you are entitled to come back as the owner of the final motion, but do you have anything to add or can I move to the vote?
Chairman, I think in the circumstances, it appears no one is willing to engage on this. I very much welcome moving to the vote and I hope that it will be unanimously approved. Thank you, Chairman.
Mr Chairman, Mr Chairman. Can I, understanding Order 28.1, have a request a recorded vote, please?
I was already going to do that, Mr Kingston. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you.
And so I will hand over to Vicky Hibbert to do a recorded vote. Vicky.
Okay, members, I'll call you out alphabetically. If you could please state for, against or abstain when I call your name. And we will start with Miss Azad. Miss Azad, you're on mute there.
Against. Sorry.
And Mrs Barton.
For.
Mr Beckett.
For.
Mr Benison.
Abstain.
Miss Boot. Miss Boot.
We'll come back to Miss Boot.
Mr Barton.
For.
Mrs Sose. Again. Mrs Branham.
Against.
Mr Brett Warburton.
Against.
Mr Carrasco.
Against.
Dr Chapman. Dr Chapman.
Against.
Mrs Clapp. Mr Cooksey. Sorry, could you repeat that, please, Mr Cooksey?
Four.
Mrs Curran. Mrs Curran.
Against.
Mr Darby.
All.
Thank you. Mr Deech.
Against.
Thank you. Mr Essex.
Four.
Thank you. Mr Robert Evans.
Four.
Mr Tim Evans.
Against.
Mr Few.
Against.
Mr Forster.
Four.
Mr Fury.
Against.
Mr Furness.
Against.
Mr Gardner. Mr Bob Gardner.
Against.
Mr Goodman.
Against.
Mr Goodwin.
Four.
Mrs Goodwin.
Four.
Miss Griffiths.
Against.
Dr Grantuff.
Against.
Mr Galati.
Against.
Mr Hall.
Against.
Mrs Hammond.
Against.
Mr Palmer.
Against.
Mr Harris.
Against.
Mr Harrison.
Four.
Mr Hawkins.
Against.
Miss Heath.
Against.
Mr Hussain.
Against.
Mrs Isles.
Against.
Mr Islam.
Against.
Mr Kingston.
Four.
Mr Knight.
Against.
Rachel Eilake.
Against.
Mr Lee.
Four.
Mrs Lewis.
Against.
Mr MacLeod.
Four.
Mr McIntosh.
Against.
Mr Mallett.
Four.
Mr Mansfield.
Against.
Mr Martin.
Against.
Mrs Mason.
Four.
Mrs Mooney.
Against.
Miss Morley.
Against.
Mrs Mosley.
Against.
Mrs Mountain.
Against.
Mrs Newell.
Against.
Mr Anute.
Against.
Mr Oliver.
Against.
Mr Ivy Riley.
Against.
Dr Povey.
Against.
Mr Ramsdale.
Against.
Mrs Rivers.
Four.
Mrs Rush.
Against.
Mr Samuels.
Against.
Mr Spence.
Four.
Mrs Steeds.
Against.
Dr Santo.
Against.
Mr Taylor. Mr Taylor.
Against.
You're on mute there, Keith.
Against.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr Thompson. Mr Thompson. Miss Thompson.
Barbara.
Move on. Mrs Thorne.
Against.
Mr Townsend.
Definitely for.
Miss Turner-Stewart.
Against.
Mr Walsh.
Against.
Mrs Watson.
For.
Mrs White.
For.
And Mrs Young.
Against.
Just go back. Miss Boot, did you want to cast your vote? Okay, so that is 21.
Thank you, members. So total four, 21, total against 52, one abstention. The motion is lost. Thank you. Now, the second motion is standing in the name of Mr Chris Button on Roman five of the main agenda. Understanding Order 12.3, council has decided, has to decide if it wishes to debate this motion today. And I will proceed on the basis that council wishes to debate the motion now, unless I hear from you otherwise. Thank you, council. Now call Chris Button to move the motion. You have six minutes, Chris. Over to you.
I'm obliged, Chairman. Thank you. I bring this motion to council today because so much damage has been done to relationships across local government in Surrey. I understand that damage. I'm closely related to it. I'm a district councillor and a parish councillor, as well as having the privilege of being a county councillor. And I'm conscious that much trust has gone. Much money has been spent, probably wasted, but much hot air has been generated without much light. There is no point in looking to blame or allocate responsibility in the chamber now because we need to move forward. The question of unitary councils will not go away. Indeed, many of us see appropriately sized and proportioned unitary councils as an effective and efficient future for local government in a system which is now at breaking point. For many boroughs and districts, the prospect of looking at shared services, at joint budgets and co-funding, which was very much on the agenda, has receded because the trust has been lost, relationships broken and without wishing to intrude on private grief, has strained political loyalties. The way forward is to agree a programme of consultation and examination with elected representatives and communities about the way forward. I say with elected representatives because in part it is with them that the relationships need to be rebuilt. It may be regretted that not all of Surrey enjoys parish, town or village councils. My own view is that consultation on the development of these councils, where they do not exist, might need to be a precursor to a unitary debate because they are the closest to their communities and in a future world may be the most efficient way of delivering and monitoring some services. The two in my division, Caterham-on-the-Hill Parish Council and Cheltenham Village Council, do a brilliant job at doing just those things, plugging the gaps the county and district leave. I recognise that much development work would need to be done to develop effective and functioning parish councils. Much would be able to be done if we had a clear view of how a unitary agenda might effectively devolve powers precisely to that level, when it's clear what powers they have, any concerns that candidates aren't interested in standing or other problems to the development of parish councils can be mitigated. I insist on consultation through elected representatives because I'm suspicious of focus groups and random assemblies and because using them, call them local community networks if you like, cannot be guaranteed to be representative, long-lasting or be able to take responsibility for the outcomes. And it's responsibility for the outcomes and owning the solutions is the only way in which these things can be built for the long term. This motion, Chairman, is about an agreed way forward, about healing broken relationships, about the county council being and looking humble, distancing itself from what looked like a hubristic project, peremptorily proposed with a vainglorious tone. On that basis, it will be possible to develop a new consensus. It will be possible to find local solutions to difficult and complex issues. The boundaries of a new authority, deep integration of health and social care and the retention of the integrity of children's services. Chairman, it is such a modest and it is a patient approach, which will most satisfactorily rebuild what is broken, so that from the bitterness might emerge a new shape for local governance that delivers services in the best way and stewards our resources efficiently. I am pleased to move this motion.
Thank you, Mr Button. Mrs White, you're seconded. Do you want to speak now or do you want to reserve your position?
I'd like to formally second and reserve my position.
Thank you very much indeed, Mrs White. So we're open for debate. Mr Robert Evans.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, colleagues. And I'd like to thank councillor Button for putting this motion on the agenda. If you look at a history of local government, most forms of local government have a lifespan of round about 50 years. The GLC lasted a somewhat shorter period than that. Surrey in its present form has been in existence since 1965, becoming a non-metropolitan county, I think, in 1972. And most of the boroughs and districts in their present format were founded a couple of years later in 74. So that's about the normal sort of time span. As councillor Button said, this is a question that will not go away. It has been debated before in council. We did, I think, five or six years ago, we debated unitary authorities. And perhaps with reflection and hindsight, we should have had a full debate or discussion some months ago before Covid started and before the government really began to set this ball rolling. My own view on unitary authorities, I think, is well known because I put round a discussion paper, or it circulated in the summer before the most recent debate started. And in the Labour Party, we've had debates, discussions, day conferences on this for the last six or seven years. And as members will know, we put this to the electorate of Surrey in our manifesto at county council elections with huge success. It's been very, very well received, but hasn't resulted in enough votes to put it to council. That being aside, councillor Derby said earlier in the previous debate, we should be about putting residents first. And of all the residents I speak to in Spelthorn area, nearly all of them feel that the present two-tier, and I know in some parts of Surrey, three-tier system is not the most efficient way of running local government, where we are not sure always whose responsibilities it is. And for example, we have the London Road running along between Ashford and Stanwell, where the road itself is run by the highways agencies. And then Spelthorn and Surrey share responsibilities for the footpaths and trimming the trees and everything else, which is not the most economically viable way of doing things, a most economically sensible way. The Surrey leaflet that's been referred to previously didn't fully explain the position to residents and was perhaps tucked away on page three. And in Spelthorn, this was counteracted then. And councillor Eva Kington spoke about Conservatives against Conservatives. We had a Conservative council in Spelthorn putting out a leaflet decrying the Surrey County Council position, which I thought was pretty unedifying. My fear about leaflets is like Chinese takeaway menus and pizza promotions. They get lost or ignored and most residents are still in the dark about this. So we...
Conclude now, please.
I will, I will, Chair, I will. I've got so many points I want to make. But we do need effective and financially efficient local government. It is important. So on this period of reflection from the government, bearing in mind that it's not going to go away, we can be used this time for a good consultation and discussion on the best way forward for local government reorganisation in Surrey. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Evans. Sorry to take you away slightly earlier than you thought. Stephen Cooksey.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Chairman, the way in which the Surrey single unitary authority bid was launched fractured relationships with districts and boroughs in a way that will be difficult to repair. The bid was launched without any meaningful discussion with districts and boroughs and to launch a bid which proposed their abolition without even cursory discussions demonstrated a complete disregard for their opinions and was bound to lead to an effective breakdown in relations. And in reality, that's what happened. Leaders of all districts and boroughs, whatever their political complexion, of course reacted strongly, with a result that both Surrey and the combined district and boroughs have now invested heavily in consultants to promote their different cases. That probably wouldn't have been necessary if a cooperative approach had been adopted at the beginning. What made it worse was that when some Conservative leaders tried to be more accommodating by joining the cross-party working group that the county had established to investigate how to proceed with the unitary bid and how to implement consequent changes in structures, they were told that Surrey was only interested in the one unitary solution and wasn't prepared seriously to consider any alternatives. For leaders who unanimously didn't support the single unitary proposal, this was just another rejection. Since then, there's been little cooperation between the county and districts and boroughs. And given the attitude displayed by the Surrey leadership, it'll take a total change of emphasis for districts and borough leaders to believe that cooperation of any sort is on the county agenda. Chairman, district and borough leaders are now investigating greater cooperation and an enhanced status quo alongside unitary options. And we should be looking at all potential ways forward. Critically, if there is to be greater cooperation, it will be necessary for the Surrey leadership to recognise that if we have to move to unitaries, options other than the single Surrey proposal must be considered seriously and they must be prepared to engage. If a unitary outcome of whatever design is to be proposed, it must be accompanied by a practical and effective system for devolving responsibilities to local communities. And no one, no one has yet provided an even understandable basis for such a system. Chairman, trust has been shattered and this authority has a mountain to climb if it's to restore even a modicum of trust with districts and boroughs, which should be our partners. I hope that the Surrey leadership recognises this and is prepared to take whatever action is necessary to engage constructively with districts and boroughs. I support this motion because it provides a mechanism to move forward in cooperation and it is one that the Surrey leadership must grasp if we are to provide the best and most acceptable solution for our residents. Thank you, Chairman.
Perfect timing, Stephen. Thank you very much indeed. Dr Grantuff.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Chairman. I was listening to councillor Button's proposal and I have to say, I heard a lot of very emotional words, which obviously reflects his personal feelings. But I don't find content in what he's trying to propose here. I'm also quite dismayed here, he's dismissing local community networks before we've even sat together to discuss them, as the leader has indicated. There is also the issue, this expectation that government stands still. We don't stand still. The boroughs and district don't stand still. And we know the government will be inviting in due course different authorities to put proposals on the table. Why should we be recoiling from restructuring local government if it means better service to our residents, if it means sustainability for the future? I was really hoping to hear he'd reserve some of his emotional language. No, I'm not dismissing his sentiment to the work that we have done. This is an authority that looks after nearly one, two million people. No disrespect meant to the boroughs and districts, but they are looking at a population which is about the tens of the size. This is the authority that handled 10,000 calls once the emergency of the Covid pandemic set in. This is the authority that made direct contact with 40, nearly 40,000 vulnerable and shielding residents. That's, that vulnerability and that level of attention is the one that drive my compassion and my emotions. This is the authority that opened a community hospital in just 35 days. Of course, it is about leadership. Of course, it is about elected representatives. And I know my residents expect that from me and expect that from any elected representative. And this is not anything to do with giving up on leadership. This is all to do with continuing to lead, with looking to the future and with not standing still complacent that all services are provided and there is nothing we can do, there is nothing to think about. There are no new ways of engaging with communities, with businesses, with individual residents. There are no new ways for us to hear their ideas because we already have a structure that does that, not at all. Chairman, I don't believe this motion is constructive in any way and I do not support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr Grantuff. Leader.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I will also be opposing this motion, not because I necessarily disagree with the sentiments of it, but because it doesn't go far enough. I explained in my statement the ambitions that this council has and why taking the initiative was absolutely what we should be doing and not carping from the sidelines. The first motion, I didn't speak on that because it was based upon a false premise, which says that the bid was unsuccessful. We haven't put in a bid yet and it hasn't been unsuccessful. You know, Chris Button talks about a humble council. Residents don't want a humble council. They want leadership from this council. I would remind members that this was a devolution and recovery white paper, a devolution and recovery white paper, which the government do still intend to publish. Restructuring was said to be part of that agenda and anybody that listened to Simon Clarke, the former minister, over the summer would have been very clear that it was a government initiative to look at changing the two-tier structure. That's not a Surrey initiative. That was the government's initiative. We were encouraged to put in, to start work on a business plan and that is what we have done. Now, it does appear that the government are only in a position to take forward three of the county councils to unitary status. There are five others, of which we are one, that are currently in the sort of the wave two and we've yet to find out when that will happen. But the letter from the minister Luke Hall confirms that our approach, our approach to look at ways to deliver improved local government in Surrey is very much of interest to the government. And so it should be because it's very much of interest to our residents. It is a shame that people are talking about local community networks without actually looking at any of the detail. Our motion, the reason that we will oppose this motion is because if it had included reference to local community networks and what those would do, we would have probably supported it. But we will deal with that and Helen Clarke will lead that in terms of explaining more detail around what that will mean for our residents. The costs of this work have been published. As you probably know, the district and boroughs have also spent £150,000 instructing KPMG. And that work, what that work has done is identify the opportunities to save costs, to come together and share services, something that I hope that they will take forward because that, I think, will be essential for their budgets going forward. I talked about in my speech about us taking control of our destiny and not allowing this to be left to govern. I'm interested to see that some of the speakers talk on behalf of the cons- I'm interested to see that some of the speakers talk on behalf of the Conservative leaders of the district and boroughs. I don't recognise the words that have been used, I don't recognise the so-called damage to the reputation or some of the emotive language that Chris Button has used. You know, this is about doing what is in the best interest of our residents. I would just point out that in the most recent survey, over 50% of, on the latest resident survey, think that Surrey County Council provide value for money. 68% of residents are satisfied with the way that Surrey County Council are doing things. When we did the survey of residents and the focus groups, 61% of residents thought streamlining of local government was a good idea. And in fact, 61% of them thought that a single unitary was a good idea. So when we talk about what our residents want, what our residents think, you know, those statistics, 61% are in favour of streamlining and indeed, in fact, of a single unitary. And actually, if you look at the breakdown of demographics, the younger generation are very much in favour of it. So why don't we just focus on the data? Why don't we focus on the feedback we receive from residents? Why don't we focus on actually together creating these local community networks? We will, of course, do that with the district and boroughs, that work has started, that engagement has started. You know, and let's find ways in which we can deliver better service for our residents within the confines of financing for local government. You know, let's focus on that rather than harping on, you know, and in the case of Mr Kington, playing the man rather than the ball. Let's just be grown up about this and let's put the interests of our residents first. That is what we were going to do and that is what our fourth motion will focus on.
Thank you, Leader. And I'm conscious of the fourth motion trying to be got in. So would people register for any questions now for this motion? I've got four left. Mary Lewis, and then after that I'll close it off if you haven't registered. Mrs Lewis.
Thank you, Chairman, and briefly, because I think that the tone of this debate has started to move round into the area where we should be, namely in the area of what our residents think and what is best for them. We started off at the beginning of the discussion far too firmly in the field of what is good for councillors. There are over 500 elected members in Surrey and most residents think that's far too many and that we should be looking at more effective and efficient ways of delivering the services they need and that we are at the moment duplicating too many aspects of local government. So I think when we think about over 60% of residents being in favour of a different way of doing things, more streamlining, fewer councils in the area, I think that's what we should be thinking about and rising to that challenge, rising to the challenge of responding to our residents. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. So just four more speakers. Mrs Lake.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'm grateful for councillor Cooksey to say that he also sat on his local authority because I too sit on my local borough. And it was interesting, I sit on a non-conservative-led borough and councillor Cooksey did say that the boroughs had put in a great deal of money. In fact, they have almost to the equal with not an end date, the same as Surrey County Council. And the leader actually made this commitment to the rest of the other boroughs and districts before it came to full council, for his councillor's approval, and we all supported him. We didn't want to see him embarrassed. And I was asked, why did I support this particular initiative? Because I genuinely feel the more information that every single councillor has, be it on the county or the borough or district, is an asset because the more information, the better the decision. So I appreciate what people are saying about the money. I do not appreciate when people are making it personal. If we're going to criticise, make it constructive, we want a way forward, but I cannot support this particular motion. But I did vote for the additional finances because I do sit on both councils. So I know what it's like to work through the full range and I find it extremely beneficial. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Mr Kington.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Whilst I appreciate the Liberal Democrats' support for the motion that I seconded and the intention of the motion, I understand, I cannot support it. No one but the government believes that local government reform is the pressing issue at the current time or even in the future. We have the Covid-19 pandemic, an economic and financial crisis, Brexit to be concluded and planning and housing reforms on the way. I hear no calls from it, from business community and crucially, none from residents. And yet here are the Liberal Democrats buying into that government agenda that says there is a need for local government reform by proposing the motion that legitimises Surrey County Council's preemptive move on this issue. Whilst I understand their desire to steer Surrey County Council into a more consensual approach to the issue, such encouragement to continue to spend council taxpayers' money on a reorganisation of local government in Surrey, for which our residents have shown no desire, is merely to bolster the Conservatives' appetite for their power asset grab in Surrey. We should be saying abandon your plans, not pretending that somehow by engaging with this administration, you can somehow move them from their path of a Surrey single unitary. Indeed, by suggesting in their motion that moving to unitary bodies is an option to be considered, the Liberal Democrats actually validate this council's position. And unfortunately, once you concede that the government's reform is a necessary act and that unitary is the way forward, then the devolution debate in Surrey is reduced to just a number, one or three. And if the Liberal Democrats believe that with a Conservative government and a Conservative-run council, they can win that argument, they are even, they are taking a very big gamble. So, Mr Chairman, I cannot support this motion and I will vote against it. But in saying this, Mr Chairman, I am aware that the speakers from all the political parties in this chamber are saying that this is part of the government agenda and we therefore have to support it. My view is that it's not our residents' agenda and I, we, therefore have to challenge it. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Kington, and you'll be pleased to hear that we'll have a recorded vote on this motion. Two more speakers, Jonathan Essex.
Thank you. I just want to comment briefly towards the end of this debate. It feels that we are again siloing ourselves into voting for or voting against a motion which appears to want to bring us together. I disagree with the leader that humility and leadership are in somehow mutual opposites. I think it is possible to take an empowered, non-ego approach to politics. We are supposed to represent our residents, not have power over them. I know we have to make difficult decisions, but I don't think that is necessarily a mutual opposite to having humility. The leader said this doesn't go far enough. I really hope that whatever the vote happens on this motion, that we are able to work together and present options in public that bring the different parties, the different councils together, but to present a set of options and get views on them rather than presume it's either one or three or one or whatever. You know, let's work through this together and let's have a positive approach and not let this be done, you know, in secret leaders' meetings between leaders of the various councils. I think the public should have a role, the public should have a say, and we need to be inclusive in how we deal with this issue going forward.
Thank you. And finally, Chris Townsend, please.
Thank you, Chairman. As people know, I'm very strong unitrist. In fact, in the past vote, many, many, many years ago, out of the 41 Mile Valley councillors, I was the one that was for it. So I'll open with that statement. I have some sympathy with the way Mary Lewis spoke. I think it's absolutely important that we do understand what the public want. And certainly the public in my, I mean, I saw some note just now about, you know, somebody ought to get out more. Certainly people in my area are confused. They were told there was going to be some sort of move towards unitary, then they told there wasn't. They had a leaflet that most of them binned with the Pizza Express leaflet. It was only part of the leaflet, not the full part of it. We need more information about this before we move any further. Maybe local groups that being suggested, as I challenged earlier, we need to know more about this. The public need to know more about this. This 61% of the public that would like to see change, I personally do, I think that they want change, but they want to know what that change is going to be and is it going to be for the better? Certainly 500 or 600 councillors, when you think we've only got 500 or 600 MPs in the country, is probably too, well, probably is too many and there are many savings to be made. But really, the public needs to be involved in this. It's absolutely vital that the public are informed properly by Surrey, not given a single option and then walking away. Thank you, Chairman.
And Mrs Townsend. Mrs Blight, would you like to speak now to second the motion?
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman. Like my group leader and other speakers, I'm very sorry to see the damage that's been done to the relationships between the various tiers of local government in this rush for a single unitary authority for the county. I can't think what possessed central government to trail that they would be issuing a white paper with such a short timescale for implementation at a time when the whole country is trying to control the Covid-19 pandemic and prepare for Brexit at the end of the year. Like councillor Button, I'm in favour of having a look at the structure of local councils. The present system is confusing for residents who find it difficult to know which council they need to contact about any particular issue. The way to organise that, looking again, is by allowing enough time for proper conversations, not just between various councils, but also with communities. And by that, I mean directly with residents, not just focus groups. I think a lot of work has to be done to heal relationships with the districts and boroughs. Regardless of their political makeup, I think just about all of them feel ill-used by this council, especially in view of the work they put in to deliver local services during lockdown and after. It's a shame that the leaflet put round by this council earlier this year doesn't specifically acknowledge that, just as councillor Zulie Grant-Duff has ignored that contribution today. The idea of using town or parish councils as the most local form of delivery is interesting, but there needs to be that level of elected bodies across the whole county, including those areas that are not currently covered. While community and residence associations play a good role, they are often self-selecting, which leaves a question of governance and democratic accountability that needs to be addressed. And I have exactly the same reservations about local community networks. Elected members at all levels are subject to Knowlham principles and those should be the bodies that are involved in delivery of any programme. Also, there needs to be a campaign to raise awareness of that level of government. All too often, there are insufficient candidates to cause an election. In fact, I've heard of cases where just enough councillors are elected at parish level to create a forum and the vacancies are filled by co-option. That really is not democracy. Chairman, I truly believe that we need to pull back from the suggestion of a Surrey-wide authority and instigate a proper conversation with the whole of the county through elected bodies and directly with residents on the issues facing local councils and the ways of resolving them. More importantly, this council needs to listen and act on what it hears. The leadership majority and the majority group must not just sit in its own echo chamber talking to itself. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Fiona. Perfect timing. Moving to Chris Button to wind up the debate. Chris.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to those who've contributed to this discussion. As, over the 23 years in which I've been a minority councillor in Surrey, I am used to having everything I say either misinterpreted or misheard. I brought this motion because I thought it could bring the council together and help us to get a considered way forward. I have absolutely no belief whatsoever that humility is a failure of leadership or that modesty is an inappropriate way of providing guidance and solving problems. I have every belief that this council has demonstrated a degree of hubris and vaingloriousness, which has done it and us no favours. And I firmly believe that the thoughtful, patient and collaborative way forward is the way to go. I didn't understand why the Conservatives could not support my motion and it seems to be more about ownership than it is about content. The issue of local community networks could have been explained at a later date and developed in a cross-party fashion in a way which we could have all joined in and understood fully. This motion provided this council with a consensual way forward, which should have healed and built bridges. I'm obviously regretful that that doesn't appear to be the case, but for those Conservatives for whom the words matter and for whom hubris is not a natural method, please support my motion. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Chris. So we'll now move to a recorded vote over to Vicky Hebert once again.
Thank you, Chairman. So members, please state clearly for, against or abstain when I call your name, please. So we'll start with Mrs Azad.
Against.
Mr Barton. Mrs Barton.
Four, sorry, four, thank you.
Mr Beckett.
Four.
Mr Benison.
Against.
Miss Boot. Miss Boot. Mr Button.
Four.
Mrs Bowes.
Against.
Mrs Bram.
Against.
Mr Brett Warburton.
Against.
Mr Crasco.
Against.
Chapman.
Against.
Mrs Clark.
Against.
Mr Cooksey.
Four.
Mrs Curran.
Against.
Mr Darby.
Four.
Mr Deech.
Against.
Mr Essex.
Four.
Mr Robert Evans.
Four with reservation.
Mr Tim Evans.
Against with no reservations.
Mr Fury.
Against.
Mr Forster.
Four.
Mr Fury.
Against.
Mr Furness.
Against.
Mr Gardner.
Against.
Mr Goodman.
Against.
Mr Goodwin.
Four.
Mrs Goodwin.
Four.
Miss Griffiths.
Against.
Dr Grant-Duff.
Against.
Mr Galati.
Against.
All.
Against.
Mrs Hammond.
Against.
Mr Harmer.
Against.
Mr Harris.
Against.
Mr Harrison.
Four.
Mr Hawkins.
Against.
Miss Heath.
Against.
Mr Hussain.
Against.
Mrs Isles.
Against.
Mr Islam.
Against.
Mr Kington.
Against.
Mr Knight.
Against.
Oh, Mr Knight, can you repeat that, please?
Against.
Thank you. Rachel Ilake.
Against.
Mr Lee.
Four.
Mr MacLeod. Mr MacLeod.
Four.
Sorry, Mrs Lewis, apologies, I missed you there.
Against.
Thank you. Mr McIntosh.
Against.
Mr Mallett. Mr Mallett?
You say it again.
Four.
Mr Mansfield.
Against.
Mr Martin.
Against.
Mrs Mason.
Four.
Thank you. Mrs Mooney.
Against.
Miss Morley.
Four.
Miss Mosley.
Against.
Mrs Mountain.
Against.
Mrs Muir.
Against.
Mr Nutty.
Against.
Mr Oliver.
Against.
Mr Riley.
Against.
Dr Povey.
Against.
Mr Ramsdale.
Against.
Mrs Rivers.
Four.
Mrs Rush.
Against.
Mr Samuels.
Against.
Mr Spennas.
Four.
Mrs Steeds.
Abstain.
Dr Santo.
Against.
Mr Taylor.
Against.
Miss Thompson. Mrs Thorn.
Against.
Mr Townsend.
Four with similar reservations.
Miss Turner-Stewart.
Against.
Mr Walsh.
Against.
Mrs Watson.
Four.
Mrs White.
Four.
And Mrs Young.
Against.
So the result of that is total four twenty, total against fifty-two, total abstentions one, so the motion is lost. Ladies and gentlemen, we are moving rather slowly. And hopefully the next one will be slightly quicker because I understand it's agreed, but let us see. The next motion, eight three, is standing in the name of Will Forster, and you've seen the amended motion circulated earlier on behalf of Mr Forster. Understanding Order twelve three, council has to decide if it wishes to debate the motion today, and I will proceed on the basis that you do, unless I hear from you otherwise. I'll just pause. Thank you. So, Mr Forster, to move to your motion, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. During lockdown, people across Surrey experienced better quality, better air quality and a safer environment with fewer cars on the road. The world is still very uncertain, as you all know, but I think there's a real need to preserve those benefits that we saw. The question for councillors to ask ourselves is the following: what type of roads, especially those outside schools, do we want for Surrey? As members, are we happy to go back to the pollution, traffic and stress of pre-lockdown? I'm not, and I don't want roads outside schools to be full of cars pumping toxic fumes right by children and families. That is why I'm proposing a motion to introduce school streets for Surrey. As you may know, a school street is where a road outside a school is closed to motor vehicles during school drop-off and pick-up times, except for residents living in the streets or disabled visitors and some other exceptions. School streets can really improve the health and wellbeing of children at the school, improve roads, road safety during pick-up and drop-off times, and encourage children to walk and cycle to school. Officers have already identified Heath End School in Farnham. That school could be the first school in Surrey as our school street school. And if we agree this motion, we would approve the principle of that plan as well as invite nominations for other school streets elsewhere in Surrey. I already have suggestions for two schools in my division, and I imagine, I hope, there are others out there as well. Communities, highways, members and schools should all be able to nominate their area as a potential school street. I hope support for school streets is across the chamber or remotely, as we were, but it's a bit more than just that. And I hope the cabinet member, if this motion's agreed, would press the government for additional powers and resources to implement school streets where possible across Surrey. I think it's bizarre that the government throws in school streets as part of an extra active travel fund thing without any additional direction, information enforcement powers to those places outside London to implement them. However, we've got a bizarre government, so I shouldn't surprise. But this motion isn't just about school streets, it's about the council redoubling its efforts to improve the general environment around schools by looking at neighbourhood zones, tree and hedge planting and air pollution projects, especially in the Schools Air Quality Programme and the Eco Schools Programme. In summary, Mr Chairman, by agreeing this motion, we will take an important step to increase road safety and reduce pollution. This will improve air quality for the next generation. It will mean less noise and more greener roads that will allow these children and their parents who can to walk and cycle. Members, please support this motion.
Thank you, Will. Mrs Goodwin, you're seconding the motion. Are you going to speak or do you want to reserve your position?
Mr Chairman, I would like to reserve my right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Goodwin. So I open the floor and Matt Furness is the first speaker.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and thank you, councillor Forster, for working with me on amending your original motion. School streets is something that we would like to see, and as you've correctly said, we are pushing the government for the powers to come out of London into the rest of the country for us to be enabled to do so. It is worth, members, please do note, we do have quite a lot of work around schools. The parts of the safety team do a lot of work, particularly around schools, for road safety. But we must consider any changes that we do make can have a knock-on impact to residents who live in those areas. So we will need to get their endorsement and their support for schemes going forward. We are doing a lot of work as well, particularly on the environmental side, around the tree planting as part of our 1.2 million pledged to plant trees. We have a hundred and four schools which are registered with mode shift and forty-one with a accredited travel plan. So we are doing a huge amount of work, not only on the safety, but also with our thirty-seven schools which have the green flag eco-school accreditation in Surrey. I'm happy to support this motion as it stands. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much indeed, and I propose to only have three more speakers unless you register quite quickly, please. Nick Harrison.
Thank you, Chairman. The motion's changed substantially since it was tabled. I was deterred that there was no mention in the original of consultation with residents and the emphasis on urgency and taking measures as quickly as possible. I think urgent decisions without consideration of what might be unintended consequences on a local traffic situation, even adding to pollution, parking and alternative routes are highly undesirable. And I welcome the clarification in the revised motion and the comments just made by Matt Furness. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Two more speakers. Julie Isles.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Just from the school's perspective, around the work that we do do with the safer travel team and air quality and working with pupils and our mode shift stars, I wanted to endorse that councillor Furness had referenced that. So it's also good to hear that councillor Harrison is supportive of the changes to this because ultimately, these streets and schemes will only be successful if local residents support them and the children are encouraged to use them. So it can't be done as emergency measures and just pushed through without sufficient consultation. Hence, we've agreed the motion and I'm very happy to accept.
Thank you. And finally, Jonathan Essex.
Thank you. I welcome this motion and to some extent the amendment, which particularly as it invites submissions from across Surrey. My understanding from the leaders today and potentially the next motion is that we intend to have thirty defined community areas across Surrey. Can I be assured that we would like to replicate this pilot quickly in at least every one of these so that everyone who has kids who goes to school can see the extent to which it works in their local area?
So, over to Angela, please. Thank you.
Mr Chairman, thank you. I'd like to thank everyone for contributing to this motion today. I'm very pleased to see that Surrey County Council is looking at school streets, firstly with Heath End School, but also with other pilots across Surrey. I also recognise that school streets won't work for everyone. Firstly, with everyone, but equally, it could work for some if we're willing to give it a try. Whilst our schools across Surrey have their own travel plan, I know from residents in Guildford, in three Guildford divisions near to where I live, that these are not a hundred percent effective. Around school drop-off and pick-up times, residents who live in the vicinity of schools regularly complain of drivers blocking their drives, drivers keeping their engines running so they can make a quick getaway once they've collected their child, and driving and parking on pavement so pedestrians have to walk in the road, and the list goes on. Our school streets must be more than just temporary movable barriers at the end of each street. We have a golden opportunity to do something much more exciting and practical for some of our schools. We can build on active travel practices that people are already doing as a result of the pandemic, obviously walking, cycling, scooting to and from school. We can introduce neighbourhood zones which may also include advisable twenty mile per hour limits. We can plant hedges, trees in and around the schools to absorb air pollutant particles. We can introduce green walls. And we can work with air pollution research experts to work with children on air pollution projects. We can also introduce drop zones where parents can safely leave their children to walk independently to and from their school. But we can't do this on our own. As well as the schools, we will need school staff, school families, local residents, academics, districts and boroughs and councillors all on side. Communication and engagement will be key. And more importantly, we will need to be bold. We will need to have the courage to try something new. Mr Chairman, I fully support this motion and hope that many members will do the same today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Goodwin. Will, would you wind up, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I will be brief and obviously just want to thank members for their positive comments and for Angela Goodwin for seconding this motion. And this pandemic has encouraged many people to walk and cycle more, but it shouldn't have taken a global pandemic to encourage people out of their cars. While I know many people in Surrey want to do more to cut their emissions and to make roads safer, the government and this council has not done enough to tackle the problems of air pollution and investing in infrastructure to make walking and cycling safer. School streets and the other measures proposed in this motion will start to readdress that. And by making areas outside schools for children, not just for cars, we will, we will make protecting and prioritising the vulnerable a priority, and I think that's really important. So with your support today, members, we can start us on our journey to create school streets in Surrey, in Farnham, I hope in my division, and then elsewhere in Surrey. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Right, members, everyone seems to be in support. Are we agreed?
Agreed.
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 Thank you, council. Right, we've got about twenty minutes left approximately for the deadline, so hopefully we can get through motion eight four, standing in the name of Mrs Helen Clark. An amendment to this motion was published yesterday on page Roman two of the supplementary agenda front sheet. And understanding Order twelve three, as you've heard before, council has to decide if it wishes to debate this motion today, and I will proceed on the basis that council does wish to debate the motion now. Thank you. Mrs Clark, could you move the motion?
Thank you, Chairman. I move the motion under the amendment as tabled. So, members of the council, we're all here, albeit virtually in these rather strange times, serving in our capacity as elected members because we believe in Surrey and Surrey residents. They, after all, put us here. This belief, commitment and responsibility that we share... Sorry? This belief, commitment and responsibility that we share has been amply demonstrated in recent weeks and months as the council has delivered for our residents in the most challenging of circumstances, especially to those residents in greatest need and the most vulnerable. While doing so, we have, I am sure, all witnessed the outpouring of community spirit, neighbourliness and warm-heartedness in our communities, by our communities, both elected and non-elected volunteers from varied sectors of our entire society. These people have gone to great lengths to support, help and encourage looking after each other. Amongst the extraordinary trauma, sadness, bereavement and distress of the spring and summer, this positive force for good and demonstration of compassion and capacity in our communities, cheek by cheek, cheek by jowl with our own staff and critical services in homes and neighbourhoods, for me, signals an urgent need and opportunity for a radical change in our relationship with our residents, one that builds on the greater levels of trust and respect that have grown during this period. We have long been leaders in our place and within our communities. I represent a largely rural area and work with my district councillors and parish councillors to deliver together for our mutual residents. And in many respects, I believe we're ahead of the curve, having put in place, with the support of our district and borough colleagues, our local and joint committees. Recent events across the country and in our own county have created the conditions for us to now work this place on a pace and scale to fully enable our residents, communities and local businesses to have a much greater say over the issues that truly matter to them in their local areas. We know that people relate most closely with their villages, with their towns and neighbourhoods, and it is on these that we intend to base our enhanced engagement work. We know especially in recent times that for a significant number of residents, they and some of us feel best to be able to engage through social media and digital devices, so we will use these technologies to the greatest effect while being sure to use ways that engage with those who are less tech savvy. The cross-party, cross-council member working group that I chaired recently proved extraordinarily helpful and supportive of discussing and developing new ways of engaging and working with local residents in defined and distinct natural communities that local people would recognise, understand and feel an affinity with. This has led to more work being undertaken to develop this thinking further, and we now wish to take this to the local people and invite their views, comments and contributions as we develop firmer and more detailed proposals. Can I just take this opportunity to thank those members across local government who participate in the working group, and especially to the leader who commissioned the work? The time is now right, and it's never been better for the council to formally recognise, support and commit to the approach to ensure our residents have more power and influence over what happens in their local communities so that they can benefit from services better tailored to meet more local needs, issues and problems dealt with quickly and close to home, community-wide, joined-up approaches to getting things done and addressing local priorities, attention being given to the things that matter most to local people and more decisions being made having regard to local circumstances and opinions. I know, as many examples there are across the community, and of course the fantastic new Community Projects Fund, Your Fund, that my colleague Mark Nitty is promoting, and how we are also restructuring our volunteer libraries to shape around their neighbourhoods, and many of our other assets, how they can be best used in communities. Chairman, I move this resolution and this motion today. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Mark Nitty, you're seconding the motion. Are you going to speak or do you reserve your position?
I think, Mr. Chairman, due to time limitations, I'll speak. Would that be the right of the...
Please, that's very kind of you. You've got three minutes. Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the heart of our vision for Surrey is community engagement and community involvement. We want to make it easier for residents to engage in matters that impact on them and where they live. This resolution incorporates the key recommendations to drive improvements for residents across the county. New local community networks are going to start to empower communities and eventually put residents at the heart of the decision-making process on local issues and services. I can't stress enough, these are new. This is going to be very different from local and joint committees. It's going to involve many different partners, local representation, and as well as you, the councillors. We also need to embrace our existing town and parish councils, who are already much closer to their own unique communities. We want to build centres of communities rather than community centres. We're already doing this for our work on libraries refresh and the Community Projects Fund, both of which have put communities and local people at the centre of shaping delivery. Your Fund Surrey is going to see investment in truly resident and community-led projects which will have a positive impact on the places in which they live. Whether we like it or not, local government has to and will change to bring it into the modern era. And change is not always easy to accept, and of course, sometimes very daunting. But this move is going to be much more resident-centric. This will start to change the way we as councillors work and engage with our communities. It's going to empower not only residents, but us as members to help to shape the environment we work and living. Supporting this motion will enable us, with your support, to move ahead. It's not going to be easy, and it has to be flexible. But overall, it's going to help us get closer to and stay closer to residents. After all, as Helen said, that's why we're here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. I've got three speakers so far. Please register straight away if you want to speak afterwards. We might just about get this in. Stephen Spence.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to speak in support of this motion on the grounds that I'm prepared to support any good idea, no matter where it might come from. So I think if you look at the last item, Buller's Road in Farnham, which is going to be a pilot, as was described in that motion, that pilot came about as a group of local residents who don't have a formal residents' association, coming together and starting to talk about a problem, engaging with their borough councillor, engaging with me as the county councillor, me getting the officers involved, and we had a conversation together. And we came up with a proposed solution that's now come to the council. Now, as it happened on this occasion, it didn't go through the local committee, but it could have, because at the moment, all the residents have as an option in the local committee is to ask a question or take a petition. And if you haven't got an organised residents' association or some other like that, those areas without them tend not to have their voices heard. So if we've got a mechanism of having a slightly more formalised way of having a local community network for a particular street, for a particular group of streets, where residents can come together in a more formalised, informal way, so you're not having to comply with getting someone to be the secretary, getting someone to be the chair, that can be enormously helpful, because these things will come and they will go. I was on a Zoom call last night of just a group of residents, a local community network, you might say, to talk about the 20 is plenty campaign and how that would fit in with the Farnham infrastructure project, where 20 miles an hour in Farnham is something that we're looking at as a quick win. And as a result of that meeting today, I've already emailed Chris Tunstall, the consultant on that project. I have already contacted other councillors about the things that they came up with. That is a local community network. So to finish, I'd say that there may be some concern, I heard it expressed earlier, that in some ways this is seeking to undercut the role of the boroughs and the town and parish councils. Well, if it's done positively and progressively, it shouldn't be. It should enhance that role, it should link to that role. It's another way of connecting. And therefore, I support it, and I thank very much the mover and seconder for putting it forward as an idea, because I think it's an idea whose time has come.
And thank you very much. The time has come, but I've got six speakers left. I'm not going to accept any more now. Please be brief. John O'Reilly.
Thank you, Chairman, and I will be brief. First of all, I would just say outside, it seems such a shame to me that Chris Barton's motion and Helen's motion couldn't have been combined together. We won't go back over the old debate, because it seems to me they are essentially complementary to each other. And, you know, and that very likely, we're going to still retain whatever our views on future of local government, probably going to retain a two-tier system in which the boroughs and the districts must be, as they always have been, important partners to this council, as well as we jointly deliver services for our residents. So in that sense, I feel a pity that we couldn't have reached a basic consensus on a joint motion, but we are where we are. And this juncture provides an incredible opportunity for new thinking and new rigorous thinking about how we deliver our services, how, as other speakers have said, how we bring in our residents to make their decisions on things that concern them most. Now, this is not the time to go... This debate and the leader, Tim Oliver, has said, you know, there's going to be a members' working group and a members' seminar, and the process should begin. But in principle, in principle, surely, it is uncontentious, it is uncontroversial, that working maybe within a current two-tier system for some time, we cannot provide, we cannot exclude the ability and the advantages of having these local community networks. Sure, the real discussions has to be, as Tim Oliver said right at the beginning, about the power, the funding, the governance, that they must not be talking shops. They have to be able to do things. Now, that is a formidable challenge for us as elected members and for our residents themselves. But let's not kill this at birth. This is as a germ of a fantastic idea, of real devolution to the people we represent. So, you know, whatever's happened now, let's look forward to the focus on the future. This is a good idea in principle. It needs to have the solid implementation and rigor. And that will be a challenge, but I think it's a challenge we can meet.
Thank you. David Harmer.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm just resurrecting myself because I got bounced out of the meeting without touching anything. So I'm not quite sure what happened there, but hopefully now you can see a bigger part. Yes, Chairman. My concern about this, I'm absolutely supportive of the general strategy, but it does seem to me that there's a general talk about such groups, if I could call it that way. And it seems to me that we probably need to be much more flexible than that thinking is suggesting. About 18 years ago, plus or minus, I had the opportunity to go and have a look at what happened in other councils which at that time were considering bidding for unitary status under the previous government. And there it seemed that they had thought a bit about having courses for courses. And I think we need not to have a specific number. I'll just put it like that for now. And part of the reason was I started drawing out what would happen if you had 30, and I could see that my own division would be part of a 65 square mile grouping, which currently has three county councillors, as a for instance, which is the way the numbers are likely to work out with 30 being the case. What I was going to suggest was that why not show how open-minded we are as a county councillor by using the current delay in what central government wants to do, by experimenting with different types of the groupings that we've been talking about here, by which I mean, you might do a bit of all urban, you might do a bit of all rural, you might do a bit of mixed in different places, and testing out what appears to be likely to be successful over time, and just use the opportunity of the time for that purpose. But remaining open-minded for the time being and seeing what comes out. Thank you, Chairman.
Nick Darby.
Thank you, Chairman. I've got absolutely no difficulty at all with residents coming together with better engagement. I think we'd all endorse that. My problem is the detail, what mandate these community networks have, what funding there is, what powers, what decision-making, and effectively to sum up, really not keen on the talking shop. Many people have talked about that already. It's a great idea. It needs to be taken further, but with misgivings, as others have said during the day. I'll stop there.
Dr. Povey. Thanks, Nick. Dr. Povey.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, in principle, I absolutely welcome this, particularly if, you know, one can bring in people like the police and the health authorities, environment agencies, i.e. those components of society that aren't within local government, because this is where we need to really tie everybody together. I think this idea of greater local engagement is desperately needed. I have examples from my own division of where that didn't occur at the right time. I was involved in Helen's task group, and the one thing that I think is missing within the motion, but maybe that's going into too much detail, but one thing that I felt was very strong was the idea of for each of these communities to have an annual plan, which is then agreed by the local community. And I just don't want us to lose sight of that as part of this. And my only other concern, slight concern, is that as I'm in a three-tier area at the moment, this could be construed as a fourth tier. And I think maybe we just need to think a little bit more about the presentation of it in that sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Turnisert.
Thank you, Chairman. I think we just need to look at this through the eyes of a resident. I mean, we are all residents, and I think many of us entered into local politics, became councillors by experiencing frustrations navigating what can be, as many members have said, a very complex system. We all know many local dedicated citizens and residents, whether they're chairman of residents' associations or leaders of voluntary groups. And I think it's really important to be able to enable all of those people to be able to harness their expertise and energy, potentially turning Surrey into even more of a powerhouse. I've been really encouraged by the consensus of our borough and district partners and our cross-party members within the working group on the work that Helen has led on. It's been a fantastic piece of work, and it's very clear on that sort of united commitment to our residents. So I think this is a really, really exciting opportunity and really delivers on our leaders' vision for community engagement in Surrey. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Nick Harrison.
Thank you, Chairman. This is an idea which I think, I think in the context of the county unitary in a seminar led by councillor Clack. And I think it's the one item left over from that unitary bid, and it seems to me a bit of a fig leaf to disguise that retreat. In that seminar, I think, and then Clack discussed full involvement of health services, that was potentially going to be one of the sort of boundaries, and also the police. But I think without the funding and the democratic mandate of elected councillors, it would become a talking shop, whatever councillor Oliver says. I'm sure we're all in favour of democracy, and I do share residents having a greater role in determining priorities. But I also share the comments of councillors Barton and White and their doubts about pressure groups potentially taking over these networks. And commenting on Stephen Spencer's input, I think he was talking about pretty small groups involving a few streets, whereas we heard that these networks could be 30,000 or 40,000 people. I think it was immensely revealing that the original motion didn't talk about the role of borough councils, and some words have only been added late in the day to acknowledge the role of boroughs and indeed of local committees. This hasn't really been thought through. And as I know more, I think I can only abstain on this motion. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Nick. So Helen, could you wind up as briefly as you can? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, everybody, for your contribution to this debate today. If you recall, those of you that did participate in our members' engagement, we produced a report, which was basically, yes, it was, it was called The Local Engagement Report. It was about recovery and devolution, based on the government's proposed white paper. And yes, this has been something that's come out of that debate. And in that report, there were seven recommendations that we made as a group, all of which more or less cover the sort of things that have been raised today. After all, Surrey is not a one-size-fits-all county, so we will have to be organic and flexible in the way that we develop these local community networks. We need to make sure that they have teeth, so there will have to be devolution. And with devolution, there will have to be funding. And that funding will have to come from those partners that are engaged in those communities, and of course, from the county council and working with the boroughs and the districts. I included those extra words in my motion, as amended, after discussions with my colleague Chris Barton, because we did try to see whether we could merge the two motions together. But unfortunately, that wasn't the case. But I absolutely was always committed in my original motion to engaging all stakeholders. And I consider all stakeholders to include boroughs and districts, parish councils, and all those volunteers from the different sectors, businesses, the faith sector, who can stand up and make a difference in this county, and who we need to harness now to get on and really improve the services that we deliver. So thank you, everybody, for your contributions. I do hope you will be able to support this motion. And I look forward to engaging with all of you to develop these plans to suit your local communities as fit over the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. So we will now move to a recorded vote. Vicky, it's you again.
Thank you, Chairman. Okay, as with previous votes, please, members, if you can stake four against or abstain when I call your name. So we'll start with Miss Azad.
Four.
Mrs. Barton. Mrs. Barton. Mr. Beckett.
Abstain.
Mr. Benson.
Four.
Miss Boot. Mr. Barton.
I'm not bitter. Abstain.
Mrs. Bowes.
Four.
Mrs. Frampton.
Four.
Mr. Brett Warburton.
Four.
Mr. Craskey. Dr. Chapman. Mrs. Clack.
Four.
Mr. Cooksey.
Abstain.
Mrs. Curran.
Mrs. Curran has some difficulty with her computer.
Mr. Darby.
Abstain.
Mr. Deech.
Four.
Mr. Essex.
Abstain.
Mr. Robert Evans.
With reservations. Four.
Mr. Tim Evans.
Four.
Few.
Four.
Mr Forster.
Abstain.
Fury. Mr Furnis.
Four.
Mr Gardner.
Four.
Mr Goodman.
Four.
Mr Goodwin.
Abstain.
Mrs Goodwin.
Abstain.
Miss Griffiths.
Four.
Dr Grant Duff.
Four.
Mr Galati.
Four.
Mr Hall.
Four.
Mrs Hammond.
Four.
Mr Harmer.
Four.
Mr Harris.
Four.
Mr Harrison.
Abstain.
Mr Hawkins.
Four.
Miss Heath.
Four.
Mr Hussein.
Four.
Mrs Isles.
Four.
Mr Islam. Mr Islam. Mr Kingston.
Abstained.
Mr Knight.
Four.
Rachel Oylake.
Four.
Mr Lee.
Abstain.
Did you say Mrs Lewis? Four. Thank you. Mr Cloud.
Was that MacLeod?
Mr MacLeod, yes, please.
Abstain.
Thank you. Mr McIntosh. Mr Mallett.
Against.
Mr Mansfield.
Four.
Mr Martin.
Four.
Mrs Nathan.
Abstain.
Thank you. Miss Rooney.
Four.
Miss Morley. Miss Morley. Mrs Mosley.
Four.
Mrs Mountain.
Four.
Miss Mueller.
Four.
Mr Nutty.
Four.
Mr Oliver.
Four.
Mr O'Reilly.
Four.
Dr Povey.
Four.
Mr Ramsdale.
Four.
Mrs Rivers.
Abstain.
Thank you. Mrs Rush.
Four.
Mr Samuels.
Four.
Mr Spence.
Four.
Mrs Steads.
Four.
Dr Santo.
Four.
Mr Taylor.
Four.
Miss Thompson. Mrs Thorn.
Four.
Mr Townsend.
Have to abstain.
Miss Turner Stewart.
Four.
Mr Walsh.
Four.
Mrs Watson.
Abstain.
Mrs Young.
Four.
Sorry, my internet dropped out. It's fear and a white here. I'm abstaining.
I keep hearing them.
So on the final motion of today for Helen Clack, there are 54, 17 against and one abstention. So the motion is passed. Thank you, council. And now we move to item nine, Surrey County Council Civic Heart move to Woodhatch on age 41 of the agenda. I call the leader of the council to introduce the report. Leader.
Thank you, Chairman. The report's very straightforward. There have been a couple of questions that were asked earlier by members regarding the transport issues, which I think I've already dealt with. So the recommendation is that the council agrees that the council civic heart be based at Woodhatch Rye Gate from first January 2021. Thank you.
Will Forster, you wish to speak?
Thank you, Chairman. So I just want to speak in relation to a report that hopefully all members received yesterday from the task group that I chair. So for the last year, I've led a cross-party task group under the remit of the Resources and Performance Select Committee, which has scrutinised plans to move and fuel out from Kingston and find new headquarters in Surrey. And obviously, plans have changed quite a lot in that time. And now the council's identified the former Cannon H headquarters in Woodhatch south of Rye Gate as a potential new headquarters. Although obviously personally, I'd love it to move to Woking or even Guildford. The task group as a whole has agreed that Woodhatch would be a suitable location in principle. However, the building and its surroundings may work, but the transport connections do not. This council needs a headquarters that is accessible to staff, members and public. Moreover, after declaring a climate emergency and complaining about Surrey's roads being congested, the council cannot move to Woodhatch, knowing that that move would encourage people to use their cars, sometimes for lengthy journeys across Surrey. The task group wants the poor transport connections to Woodhatch to be addressed before the final decision is taken. Once councillors can see the sustainable transport plans and the costs involved, we can judge, all of us ourselves, if designating Woodhatch as Surrey's headquarters is the right decision. It could be that to improve the transport connections enough, it will cost too much money and we need to make that decision then. On other matters, the task group has concerns on the timing and the move in advance of a comprehensive office estate strategy and other factors as contained in my report circulated. By waiting until the council knows what the transport connection plans for Woodhatch are, those things, the wider office strategy, the four hubs that we want to see, things could be a lot clearer on those matters, which would be very crucial. So as a result, Mr Chairman, that is why I'm proposing an amendment, as contained in the task group report, that full council does not make the final decision today.
Thank you. So have anyone else to debate this now?
Rachel Lake.
All left, please.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I have only recently joined the task group for their last meeting. And I was supportive of recommendations that were put forward to today's full council. I appreciate the report only came out recently as a late report, as the meeting was only held a few days ago. However, I would be happy if the leader was to say that the recommendations could be accepted. I would be happy if I had his word that they will be followed through. But I'm very conscious is that we may be throwing the baby out with the dish water or with the water. And therefore, I would ask for his comments before we debated any further, his views on this, as opposed to just we do go or we don't go, because the other items in the recommendations are extremely important. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Jonathan Essex.
Thank you. Earlier in this meeting, two questions for myself and Nikki Barton highlighted the need for a sustainable travel plan as part of this. And we were assured that this was the first step. If that's the first step, then I think we should have that first and then commit to move second. But I would be happy to support the move on the basis that I'm assured that not just will we produce the travel plan, but that we will have sufficient budget allocated to that travel plan to make sure that this is a sustainable location. You know, it exists. It's going to be a corporate headquarters for someone if it's not a county council base for us, which we've now purchased it. But I want the assurance that sufficient investment is going to happen to make sure that we deliver on our transport promises.
Thank you, Jonathan. Nick Darby.
Thank you, Chairman. I have to say I agree with what's been said most recently by Will, by Rachel and Jonathan Essex as well. I've visited Woodhatch. It's a magnificent location, there's no doubt about that. But I think it is telling that there are, I believe, 475 car parking spaces, which seems to indicate that it's not exactly sustainable. Sustainable is very important. We need to know what the cost is, what money is going to be spent. Again, we're looking at residents here, what they're paying in their council tax. And yet again, I fear we don't have the detail we need. And simply saying, oh, well, here's what we need to do. Let's go to Woodhatch. I don't feel is quite good enough. There is a task group. It looked carefully at things, I have no doubt. It's made recommendations. I think we should accept them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Mallett.
Yes, as far as I'm concerned, there are members here now making, as in some of the previous debates, mountains out of a molehill. Transport is not a rocket science. Anybody can arrange a shuttle service or other transport or arrange with the local bus companies, all sorts of things quite easily. You know, there's no difficulty in making that sort of arrangement. I think this is just really blowing up something that doesn't exist. So I certainly can't support those people who want to see a department. But we'll never get anything done if we concentrate on this sort of detail to hold a major decision up. Thank you.
Thank you. Just got three more speakers and then I'm going to move on. Matt Furnis.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I agree with the previous speaker. We've made a commitment to move out of Kingston and back into Surrey. We said we were going to do that this year. And we need to give that certainty, not only to everyone for that announcement, but also to the staff. And we can keep talking about this. I think it's now time. We've made a decision and we need to make that decision now to move into the east of Surrey, which will be a fantastic support to the local economy there as well. We need to stop discussing this and finally decide it. And let's move back to Surrey. Thank you.
Thank you. So I've just got three more speakers. Fiona White, Nick Harrison and Natalie Bramall. I call Fiona.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm just going to say very briefly, it's not that long ago that this council passed a motion regarding climate change. We need to actually put that into effect in all the decisions we make. The building that at Woodhatch is absolutely brilliant. It would make a really good headquarters building. There is an issue that it is a long way away from the centre of the town. Transport links are not good. I want to see a proper transport plan, preferably with a shuttle bus or something like that, because otherwise people are going to have to use their cars to get to and from even more than we do at the moment. So please, let's make sure that we have the right travel arrangements and make good on our climate change promise.
Thank you, Fiona. Nick.
Thank you, Chairman. I think Will has covered the points quite satisfactorily. I think the decision of the task group or the recommendation was to proceed with with caveat that we should clarify, first of all, the transport arrangements. And I would support an amendment if councillor Forster's minded to bring one forward.
Thank you, Nick. And finally, Natalie Bramall.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to say, as somebody who actually lives in the area, about 10 minutes away, and people obviously aren't aware, Regent is a transport hub. Regent is the only area outside of London that has east-west and north-south connectivity by rail. It also has a very good bus service. You can get straight to Gatwick Airport from the bus. It's very easy to walk from Rye Gate town centre. It really isn't a long way at all. It's about 20 minutes. And I appreciate for ladies with high heels, they might balk at that. But I'm sure many will drive. It really is about time that we moved our headquarters back into Surrey and I'm very supportive of doing that now. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. So going back to Will Forster, Will, do you have a formal amendment to make?
Thank you, Chairman. I did. It was contained in the report that was circulated yesterday, which is why I did not read it out again. But yes, it was a proposal for an amendment to delay the final decision until councillors have seen the transport plans. And I've got a second in Nick Harrison.
On that basis, I propose to take a roll call on the amendment. Vicky, would you lead the roll call on the amendment, please?
Councillors, so you're voting on the amendment that's been proposed by Mr Forster, seconded by Mr Harrison. And I will start with Mrs Azad. Could you please state four against abstain?
Against.
Mrs Barton. Mr Beckett.
Four.
Mr Benison. Mr Benison. Miss Boot. Mr Barton.
Four.
Mrs Bose.
Against.
Mrs Bramhall.
Four.
Mr Brett Warburton.
Against.
Mr Crasko.
Against.
Dr Chapman.
Against.
Mrs Clack.
I just wanted to say that for the benefit of those people watching in the public, they won't know what this amendment is, because it's neither been published nor actually tabled at this meeting. However, for those of us who do know what it is, I would vote against the amendment.
Sorry, I should have said against. Mrs Bramhall, sorry.
Yeah, get a grip, Natalie.
I'm just going to pause the vote there, because Will, would you please just clarify the amendment for everyone's sake, please?
Thank you, Chairman. Obviously, thank you councillor Clack for highlighting. It might not be in the many supplementary papers. But as of yesterday, or early yesterday, county councils received a report from the task group that I chair outlining several recommendations. One of them, that is the final decision, is delayed and not made today on designating Woodhatch the council civic hub. And it's delayed until the transport assessment has been complete. And it's that- assessment has been complete. And it's that amendment and the spirit of that amendment that we're voting on now.
Thank you very much indeed. And for members of the public, you now know what we're voting on. So back to Vicky Hibbert, would you proceed with the vote? Thank you.
So I'll start again, members, just so we're very clear what we're voting on. So we'll start with Mrs Azad.
Against.
Thank you. Mrs Barton. Mr Benison.
I think you missed me out.
Mr Beckett.
Four.
Miss Boot. Mr Button.
Four.
Mrs Bowes. Against. Mrs Bramall.
Against.
Mr Brett Warburton.
Against.
Mr Carrasco. Mr Carrasco. Dr Chapman.
Against.
Mrs Clack.
Against, against.
Dexie.
Four.
Mrs Karen. Mr Darby.
Four.
Mr Deech.
Against.
Mr Elwood. Mr Essex.
Four.
Mr Robert Evans.
Four.
Mr Tim Evans.
Against.
Mr Few.
Against.
Mr Forster.
Four.
Mr Fury. Mr Furness.
Against.
Mr Gardner.
Against.
Mr Goodwin.
Against.
Mr Goodwin.
Four.
Mrs Goodwin.
Four.
Miss Chris.
Against.
Dr Grantuff.
Against.
Mr Galati.
Against.
Mr Hall.
Against.
Mrs Hammond.
Against.
Mr Harmer.
Against.
Mr Harris.
Against.
Mr Harrison.
Four.
Mr Hawkins.
Against.
Miss Heath.
Against.
Mr Hussein.
Against.
Mrs Iris.
Against.
Mr Islam.
Against.
Mr Kingston.
Four.
Mr Knight.
Against.
It's not you. Mr... Sorry, Mr Knight, can you repeat your vote, please?
It's not mine.
Mrs Lake.
Four.
Sorry, vote should I make? Mrs Lay.
Four.
Mr Lee.
Four.
Mrs Lewis.
Against.
Mr MacLeod.
Four.
Mr McIntosh. Mr Mallett.
Against.
Mr Mansfield. Mr Martin.
Against.
Mrs Mason.
Four.
Mrs Mooney. Mrs Mooney.
Against.
Miss Smalling. Mrs Mosley.
Against.
Mrs Mountain.
Against.
Mrs Muir.
Against.
Mrs Ete.
Against.
Mr Oliver.
Against.
Please. Mr...
Mrs O'Reilly, against.
Dr Povey.
Against.
Mr Ramsdale.
Against.
Mrs Rivers.
Four.
Mrs Rush.
Against.
Mr Samuels.
Against.
Mr Spence.
Four.
Mrs Steeds.
Against.
Dr Santo.
Against.
Mr Taylor.
Against.
Miss Thompson. Mrs Thorne.
Against.
Mr Townsend.
Four.
Miss Turner-Stewart.
Against.
Mr Walsh.
Against.
Mrs Watson.
Four.
Can I, chairman?
Hello?
It's Mike Benison. I have to go to the front door urgently, and could I put round against? Is that all right?
Thank you, Mr Benison. And Mrs White.
Four.
And finally, Mrs Young.
Against.
Thank you, members. While we're waiting for this count to take place, I just want to amend the... On the question four, given the wrong figures, fifty were four, one against, and seventeen abstentions. Thank you. And on this item, there are twenty-three four, forty against, and no abstentions, so the item is lost. So as the amendment falls, members, I will proceed on the basis that the recommendation on page forty-two of the agenda is agreed. Thank you.
Agreed, agreed.
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 Against.
And now moving to item ten, the review of the COVID-related constitutional changes on page forty-three of the agenda. I called him Oliver, the leader of the council, to introduce the report. Leader.
Thank you very much, chairman. Again, I think this is pretty straightforward. We did give officers delegated authority to make non-executive decisions for a period of six months. That is now up for review, and the recommendation is to remove, redefine the definitions on. So I think that also, just to note point five on the paper, which is that the Audit and Governance Committee reviewed the use of the original delegations in March twenty-twenty, and they have been monitoring this throughout. But I would just ask this council to agree the recommendations as set out in the paper, please.
Thank you. This is not controversial. Recommendations one to five. Anyone disagree?
Agreed.
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 Thank you. That's agreed.
Agreed.
Eleven members' allowances. Again, a follow-up from the Independent Remuneration Panel report. Similar things, I think, leader. We've said this before. Have you got anything at all to add, or can I go to the recommendation?
Go to recommendations, thanks, chairman.
Thank you. So, members, is that agreed?
Agreed.
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 That's recommendations one to four, agreed. Item twelve, changes to cabinet portfolios and appointment committees, page forty, bit of supplementary agenda. You see the recommendations. I will read them. Council to note that Mr Edward Hawkins' appointment by the leader as a deputy cabinet member supporting the property portfolio area on twenty-ninth September twenty-twenty, as a result of the above, appointments are to be made by the planning and regulatory, including the vice chairmanship and audit and governance committees for the remainder of the twenty-twenty-twenty-one council year. Mrs Victoria to be appointed to Audit and Governance Committee, Mr Tim Evans to be appointed to the Planning and Regulatory Committee, council to delegate authority to the chief executive to appoint to the roles of Vice Chairman of the Planning and Regulatory Committee, and Vice Chairman and Select Committee Task Group Lead for the Resources and Performance Select Committee to the Chief Executive. Are we agreed, these recommendations, one to three?
Agreed.
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 Members, item thirty, the report of the cabinet on page fifty-five of the supplementary agenda. I call the leader of the council to present the reports of the meeting of the cabinet held on twenty-first July and twenty-ninth September twenty-twenty. Leader.
Thank you, chairman. I beg to move the report of the cabinet meetings held on the twenty-first of July and twenty-ninth of September twenty-twenty.
Thank you, and I call paragraph A. B. D. Was that someone you said, someone? No. E, F, G. Thank you, members. And at its meeting on the twenty-first July twenty-twenty, the cabinet considered an urgent item related to the recovery and devolution white paper, and the cabinet recommends that the county council notes this decision. And therefore, the motion is that the report of the meetings of the cabinet held on twenty-first July and twenty-ninth September twenty-twenty be adopted. Are we agreed?
Agreed.
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 Thank you, members. And on item fourteen, Cabinet meeting, Cabinet minutes fifty-seven of the agenda, and page fifty-one of the supplementary agenda, I now turn to this final item, and there's no notification of the questions on the minutes has been received. This penultimate full county meeting at County Hall in Kingston upon Thames ends at thirteen forty-five. Thank you.